And thank you for being here to those in person and also for those who are watching us live streaming. I will ask our Board Secretary to take role to establish a quorum for the record.
Thank you. President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez?
President.
Member Lopez?
President.
Member Miller?
Here.
Member Otto?
Here.
Student Member Lopez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And now I will ask our student board member to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. Thank you.
For those of you present in the room, the Board appreciates and supports community input at our meetings. During the meeting, there will be time for the public to comment on matters on the agenda and matters not on the agenda. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms here by where the Board Secretary is sitting, right over there. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form now indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The Board took action on the following items. Regarding item 4.1, the Board voted 5-0 to approve certain administrative appointments. I will turn it over to the senior team for the announcements of names and positions.
Thank you, President Craighead. I'll get us started with the Early Learning in Elementary Schools Division. So it's my pleasure to announce Rosalba Gonzalez is being promoted from Program Specialist in Head Start to Assistant Director, Head Start. Marsha Jackson, a Head Teacher in Head Start, to Early Learning Center Manager in Head Start. And Blanca Ureta, from Teacher on Special Assignment, Head Start, to Early Learning Center Manager in Head Start. And I hand it over to Dr. Camarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moskowitz. I'm proud to announce that Candace Calderon Lem, new hire to our district as Head Counselor at Lakewood High School. Mr. Zaid?
And I will keep that going with our non-school sites. And I'm also proud to announce Robin Gengarias, from Teacher at Coverly to Administrative Assistant, Investigations, Human Resource Services. Laura Brown, which is a new hire, to Administrative Assistant, Teaching and Learning, Office of School Support Services. And Catherine Perez, which is also a new hire, Program Specialist, English Learner, Service Coordinator, Office of Curriculum Instruction, Professional Development. Both Laura and Catherine come with many years as experienced administrators and we're happy to welcome them to Long Beach Unified.
Thank you. That was very well coordinated. Almost felt like the wave. But congratulations to all of our new administrators and welcome to those who are joining us for the first time on our team. On item 4.2, the Board voted 5-0 to approve a retirement agreement release with a permanent certificated teacher, resolving all claims between the parties and providing for consideration. So now we are at adoption of the agenda. Any changes? Okay, we're gonna need a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
We'll have a roll call vote.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
And Student Member Lopez, preferential vote?
Aye.
Okay. That passes 5-0.
Thank you. And now we get to honor a retiree. So I am gonna ask for Joanne Yuji to come to the podium. I have something to read and that's gonna be your turn for comments or something you'd like to share. And then I'm gonna ask you to come around, I think starting over at the side. Come around so we can all shake your hands and then we'll take a picture. So we'll get that, we'll get that process started. So, tonight, we'd like to recognize you for your service and a certificate once we're finished with the process. But we are celebrating 37 years of service to the district and you are retiring as a kindergarten teacher at...
(laughing) No.
No.
Second grade.
Second grade, okay.
No wonder those kindergartners were doing second grade level.[330.62][330.62](laughing)
Thank you. Well, we would like to praise you for being a well-respected member of the school community who is dedicated to the overall Burnie team, for being a collaborative and reflective educator who puts in extra time to learn the curriculum and student, and support student learning, and for creating a classroom environment of positivity, empathy, and inclusion, and keeping open and regular communication with families in support of students. So, please accept this certificate for your 37 years of dedicated service to the Long Beach Unified School District, and your lasting contributions to the lives of thousands of students.
Board members and executive staff, I want to thank Long Beach Unified for being my home for the past 57 years. You're actually looking at someone who has been continuously in a classroom for the past, for the past 57 years. I started out as a kindergarten student at Muir, then I went on to Stephens and then to Poly where I was hired for my first district job, which was Lab Assistant to Mr. Duncan, where my main duty was cleaning out animal cages in the science lab. And I was so happy with that job because I made $3.86 an hour.[482.87][482.87](laughing) While working my way through college, I worked as a teacher's aide and I did my student teaching in the district. I began my career at Burnett before I was transferred to Burnie. It was ironic that I was transferred to Burnie because I would not have been able to attend that school as a child. When my parents were looking for a home in the mid-'60s, just a couple blocks from Burnie, a realtor told my dad, who was Lutheran minister and a veteran of World War II who served in the 442nd, "We don't rent or sell to Japs in this neighborhood." About 15 years into my career, when I was completing my PhD at USC, where I researched and published with Dr. Stephen Crashen, I was offered a full-time tenure-track position at Pepperdine where I was teaching part-time. I was, I was tempted to leave Long Beach for the more prestigious pastures of higher education. I remember having a conversation with my dad, asking for his advice on whether or not to accept the position. His response was, "Our family serves the community. It's your decision to decide where you are most needed." I decided that I was needed more by my elementary students, so that's where I stayed. I did keep part, the part-time job at Pepperdine, then went on to teach at UCLA and Cal State Long Beach. I'll always remember my dad being so proud that his PhD daughter focused her career on serving the inner-city elementary students. I thought that when the last year of my career finally arrived, I would be thrilled that it was over, but I had mixed feelings. On the last David Letterman Show, if you're a fan, Tom Waits performed the song "Take One Last Look." Bruce Olsterholt, my husband, who I met at Webster's one summer a long time ago, suggested that I take one last look as I progressed through the school year, and by the end of the year, I would know if I was ready to go. In truth, I took many last looks during that year. I made a mental note of all the things I enjoyed and all the things I wouldn't miss. I also thought about my goals as a teacher and whether or not I met those goals. 37 years ago, my main goal was to make sure there were no invisible students in my class. As a third grader at Muir Elementary, I was the invisible student. In fact, I was so invisible that my teacher, Mrs. Bazell, could remember my name, so she called me girl the entire year. Throughout my career, I made sure to get to know every student by having meaningful verbal contact with each student every day, and I discovered so many hidden student gems. During one conference a few years ago, a parent thanked me for talking to his daughter. He said he didn't think any of her previous teachers ever got to know her. On the last day of school this year, the mother of a former student sought me out to thank me. She said her children were both very shy, but I had given her daughter the confidence to speak at fifth grade graduation. In my heart, I hope these are signs that I met my goal. Reflecting on my career, I am most proud of evolving from a beginning teacher who is so concerned about my students doing well on district and standardized test, to an educator who understands that students are more than a compilation of test data, I ready stretch growth expectations and numbers on a page. I'll miss collaborating with the Burnie faculty and parents, supporting the National Board program as a master teacher and a pre-candidate facilitator, but most of all, I'll miss being the teacher I wish I had as a child.
Thank you again.[787.25][787.25](applause)
Now, that's how you set the tone for a school board meeting, right, Madam President?
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think the favorite part of everything you said was that because of the way you had been treated, you treated others differently and you made it a point to really, truly see your students because you hadn't been seen. I think that's one of the most valuable things you can do as a teacher. So for that, thank you.[821.76][821.76](applause) Ooh, need to turn the page. And our next presentation would be for early edu, the Early Education Teacher of the Year. Mr. Moskowitz.
Thank you, President Craighead. So you may recall for many years, our district has participated with the Los Angeles County Office of Education Teacher of the Year Program. You may remember recently, Ryan Ung from OCIPD was here to present our Teacher of the Year. However, only credentialed teachers in TK-12 settings are eligible for the Laco Teacher of the Year Award. So our district's birth-through-third-grade team developed a process and sought nominations for our Early Childhood Education Teacher of the Year. This is the first year we've done this. We had many nominations come in from principals and colleagues and even a couple of parents. So after a thorough review process, one teacher was selected as this year's inaugural LVUSD ECE Teacher of the Year. And here to present the award is LaShelle Diggs, Director of Head Start. So LaShelle, come on up and tell us who is the recipient.
Good evening, President Craighead, our board members, Dr. Baker and executive staff. I am most honored to announce our first winner of this prestigious award. And I'll have her come up and then I'll be able to tell you a little bit about her. It's our Head Start TK Partnership Teacher, Ms. Cristo Duarte. Come on up.[912.41][912.41](applause) Tell you a little bit of why Cristo was nominated for this award and won the award. Ms. Duarte's outstanding commitment to her school, colleagues, and student, is, students is evident in everything she does. She contributes to her team and shares her knowledge to support all. She consistently volunteers and it's the helping hand that is always there when colleagues need it. Cristo is the perfect role model to others because she shows compassion, strength, and a great sense of humor while striving to understand those around her. While Cristo was at Edison, she was a sobrado early academic language, which is CO pilot teacher. She embraced new learning in this role and eagerly implemented new strategies to develop her students' oral language skills. She consistently thinks outside the box and invests time in creating ways to ensure all of her students receive the attention and accommodation needed to succeed. This school year, she moved to Roosevelt Elementary as a Head Start TK Partner Teacher, successfully implementing an innovative model of the Transitional TK Program. Cristo empowers every student who steps into her classroom and her colleague. Ms. Alcampo, the person who nominated her, stated, "Cristo has been my biggest inspiration during my teaching career. She has motivated me to have a voice and find my strengths as a teacher. Cristo Duarte brings joy to everyone around her and leaves a lasting positive impact on the minds and hearts of childrens and families." With great pleasure, I announce Cristo Duarte as the first recipient of the Early Childhood Education Teacher of the Year Award.[1021.82][1021.82](applause)
Thank you all. This is a great honor and I'm so excited for all the early learning teachers out there to finally be recognized that we are teachers too. And this is really great. Thank you.[1049.52][1049.52](applause)
Thank you. And actually, before you sit down, we'll have you come over here for a photo. So, to our honorees, you are welcome to stay for the board meeting or you may choose to go and celebrate. It's up to you. But thank you for being here tonight. But before we move on from our recognitions, I would like to, I would like to thank our student board member, Frania, and acknowledge your service this last semester, I think it's been. But I'd like to thank you for your contribution to the Board. I'd like to thank you for using your voice, for being the student right here on this dais that reminds us of what's important, of the reason that we do what we do. And you've been so giving with your time and your dedication, so I want to thank you. And also, we have a plaque for you. This is, this is your last board meeting, I understand? And so that makes me very sad. But we, we have this, this beautiful plaque for you. So if everyone can join me in giving Frania a big round of applause. Frania, do you have any reflections on your time with us?
I've been only but grateful for this opportunity that I've had. I never imagined I would be sitting here or doing anything of what I do now and what I will do in the future. Ever since March 1st, I feel like my life has changed. I've become a more confident person in a different way. Like personally, I feel like, I feel stronger in a way that I can stand up for myself, that students in LVUSD and in other school districts have the chance to speak up about their issues. And I feel really happy that LVUSD has been very supportive and nice to me. And I understand that every adult here is very dedicated to their job. And I'm so glad to have been part of this school district and my life in general here in Long Beach five years ago. It's been the happiest I've been in my existence, being a student. And, I mean, I wish I could stay for longer, but I graduated. Yeah.[1308.11][1308.11](laughing) Thank you.[1310.11][1310.11](applause)
Mr. Miller?
Thank you for everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words. First, to just thank you for your service, as it was already stated. It's been, for lack of a better term, valuable in a number of senses. First off, we heard earlier the importance of feeling seen, right? And from a board member perspective, we are in place to make outcomes for students, for this, for the larger district. And we make a lot of decisions that are macro-level. And I appreciate it. Every time you were here, you gave us the practical impacts of our decisions. And so having you here has been both fun, as I often ask a couple of questions and talk about your time over at Jordan, there's a principal's in the back there, but also just getting a student's perspective. And so I just really wanted you to hear from me in front of everyone how important your role has been to us. And so I just wanted to thank you again.
Frania, it's been my honor to serve with you. I wasn't quite sure when this idea was conceptualized about having a student school board member with us, so I wasn't ever opposed to it, but I didn't know, you know, what that was gonna look like, feel like. And so I echo Board Member Miller's comments in terms of my appreciation for everything you shared, your ideas, your perspectives, as a student, but as a fellow board member as well. And I can't wait to hear about what's next in your life. So please, you know, we don't want to hear about it in headlines about the great things that you did. Don't forget that Long Beach, as you said, you've had many happy memories here, is your home. And please always consider this board not just a support for you, but a reflection of your contribution to Long Beach Unified School District students. So thank you.
Well, Mr. Otto, and then?
Sure. Yeah, no, I share one sentiment in that when this idea came up, I thought, what's this gonna do? What's this gonna add? Is it gonna slow everything down? And what I learned was, we made a commitment about a year ago to provide opportunities for student voice. And you have been an excellent student voice on this board. I've learned things from the things that you've said. There are things that you think about that I never thought about, and yet they were educational to me. And I wish you all your success in the future. And I hope you'll come back and see us and let us know how you, your life is progressing. So thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you, Frania. Just having you here reminds us why we're here. And so, and your input has been very valuable and I wish you the best. I know you're going to places, so felicidades.
So thank you, Frania. You can tell, we all appreciate having you here. And also, we want you to come back and let us know how things are going. Okay, so now we will move on to public testimony on...
President Craighead, we do have one more celebration feature. That's a short video that the stranger is ready to share.
Oh, I skipped that, didn't I? Thanks for keeping me in line.
The library program is very important because the libraries are the hub of the school. It's not just a single class where a particular group of students goes. The library is open to every student. Our libraries are staffed by either teacher librarians or library media assistants.
I do a lot of collaborative planning. I work best when the teachers have a need in their classroom. I'll meet with them and learn about the lessons that they're working on in the classroom. There's always a way that the library can integrate into their lessons.
Assist students more. And then we have a librarian on campus, so she does more collaboration with the teachers. And then I help her in that sense. You know, a big part of the science of reading is getting like a joy of reading. We're able to help them connect to books that they're interested in. We do like Taylor Swift displays to try to like hook them in or like, oh, you like, you know, sci-fi? Check out this dystopian novel. So we're able to kind of dig deeper than what maybe a teacher could do with a whole class.
One of the projects that we've worked on is to diversify our library collections. We were able to provide several hundred books for every library of diverse equitable-inclusive titles. It's good to have diversified texts so that kids can see themselves in what they read. They won't just see one type of person in each book. They'll see, oh, that person looks like me. Oh, that person lives in a place that's similar to where I live. That person has parents that are similar to my parents.
My family's probably from Higgle, they're from Michoacan. Growing up, all the books in the library were older. So, I mean, I would read the books and I loved them, but it wasn't me. And since last year, I've noticed that my kids are loving these books. And I noticed that those have become super popular. And I have kids like tell me, like, oh, like I've never read a book or had a main black character, like, oh, I had a book that we talk about having immigrant parents, it's really cool because it's what I'm going through.
These students love new books. No matter what they are, they love new books. But these diversified books have brought another sense of showing the students that there's other cultures out there besides the ones they already know about. I was reading the book Hair Love to kindergarteners and this one little student said, "That's me! That's me!"
We really support each other, both the teacher librarians and the media assistants. It's a very cohesive group and we're really proud of that in this district because it's known that Long Beach Unified has a very strong library program.
I do appreciate that message of kids being able to see themselves reflected in the books because books can be windows or they can be mirrors. So we had a request to do a photo with our student representative. And should we do that now? And our, our Jordan principal is here. And so we're just gonna take, we're just gonna take a minute to do that and then resume the agenda. So let's...[1771.32][1771.32](pause) Oh, I think standing because then she can hold her card. Yeah, yeah. 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 Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Now we will go to public testimony on items listed on the agenda. And it looks like we have six speakers, so we'll start with Martha Cota.
Buenas tardes a todas y a todos. Aquí de regreso con ustedes, Superintendent Baker, personal. Mi nombre es Martha Cota, de Latinos in Action California. Y estoy representando a todos los estudiantes, en especial a mis nietos que está en Poly y en Roosevelt. Mi comentario público es para el CAP. Y ya saben como cada año nosotros creamos recomendaciones del presupuesto. Y en el pasado nuestro abogacía ha resultado en el aumento de inversiones en consejería, justicia restaurativa, acceso al lenguaje y la creación de nuevos programas como la iniciativa de logro para estudiantes afroamericanos y programas de recuperación de aprendizaje. Este comentario público es basado en nuestras recomendaciones para el presupuesto 23-24 que estarán representando joven, hoy lo van a hablar los representantes jóvenes y padres que están pidiendo inversiones de fondos para tres áreas: en la académica, la de enriquecimiento y de involucramiento de familias. Y ya los compañeros van a hablarles sobre las peticiones. Gracias.
Good afternoon, everyone, members of the board, Superintendent Baker and staff. My name is Martha Cota from Latinos in Action California. I am representing all students, in particular my grandchildren who are at Poly and Roosevelt. My public comment is for the LCAP for 2023-2024. As you know, each year we create budget recommendations. In the past, our advocacy has resulted in increased investments in counseling, restorative justice, language access, and the creation of new programs such as the Black Student Achievement Initiative and learning recovery programs. This public comment is based on our 2023-2024 budget recommendations that youth and parents will be presenting to invest funds in the following three areas: academic supports, enrichment programs, and family involvement. And my colleagues will be presenting on those later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Jose Perez.
Good afternoon, board members, staff, and attendees of this meeting. My name is Jose Perez, a student at American High School, members of Latinos in Action California. My comment is on LCAP. My request is the same, to ask for more academic support for multilingual learners and their families. It is shameful that not even half of the multilingual learners in the district are not receiving the support that they need for English language proficiency. And this is reflected in the very low rate of graduates who are appropriate English learners compared to other students. It is sad to see my frustrated classmates and friends who are English learners and the discouragement that they have to continue studying because they do not receive academic support, so they cannot master the English language. Although the school district has brought programs and may bring new programs and new materials for newcomer students, this is still not enough for the challenges faced by the multilingual learners. This is why I am asking you on behalf of all students to add these recommendations to the LCAP and considering resting not miles but millions in this need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Guillermo Cruz.
Guillmina.
Guillmina, oh, I'm sorry, I should have my glasses on. Guillmina.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la mesa directiva, Superintendent Baker y personal. Mi nombre es Guillmina Cruz. Soy madre de un estudiante de Poly y miembro de Latinos in Action California. Mi comentario es para el LCAP 23, 22-23. Estoy aquí para pedirles que agreguen fondos para el involucramiento de la familia en el CAP, ya que es fundamental que la familia sea parte en el éxito estudiantil. Aunque el distrito se esfuerza para mejorar el involucramiento de la familia, debe hacer más si en realidad quiere alcanzar a las familias más marginalizadas. Y para mejorar la comunicación del sitio escolar. Les falta tener ese contacto cercano con nosotros, los padres, con estrategias que conecten e informen, que no solo sea que uno tenga que entrar al sitio de la página del distrito. Por lo que recomendamos que el involucramiento sea más inclusivo y creativo en el presupuesto y seguridad. Estuve decepcionado con la falta de involucramiento hacia familias diversas en este año en el LCAP. También quiero más oportunidades para dar opinión sobre cómo hacer que nuestras escuelas sean más seguras a través de justicia restaurativa y otros apoyos positivos. Por favor, aumenten el lenguaje de alcance público apropiado, que sea inclusivo, creativo en estos importantes temas, y especifiquen, especifique sus estrategias para el próximo año en el CAP. Gracias.
Good afternoon, board members, Superintendent Baker and staff. My name is Guillmina Cruz. I am the mother of a Poly student and a member of Latinos in Action California. My comment is for Article 13.1 of the LCAP 2022-2023. I'm here to ask you to add funding for family engagement to the LCAP, as it is essential that the family be a part of student success. Although the district strives to improve family involvement, it must do more if it really wants to reach the most marginalized families and to improve communication from the school site. They lack having that close contact with us parents with strategies that connect and inform, that it is not only that one has to enter the district page site. So we recommend that engagement be more inclusive and creative on budget and safety. I was disappointed with the lack of engagement for diverse families this year in the LCAP. I also want more opportunities to give input on how to make our schools safer through restorative justice and other positive supports. Please increase appropriate outreach language that is inclusive and creative on these important topics and specify your strategies for next year in the LCAP. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ana Lourdes Boadilla.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Baker and staff. My name is Ana Franco Boadilla from Latinos in Action California. My comment is for the LCAP. We are all interested in student success, and one of the best ways to achieve this is through parent involvement. So it is very important that they build capacity and accountability for effective school-side councils. As they are very important spaces where they can make decisions, but most members do not understand their role or power. We want you to consider training people interested in being part of the SSE. Families arrive at Cafe Cito with Pan, one of the groups where parents and guardians meet in workshops focused on academics. And some parents share that they are already part of the council but do not know their role or their responsibilities. Then this makes us see that many SSCs are not working the way that they are designed. Therefore, we are asking for a specific language in the parent involvement/outrage action that specifies SSE training and audits for next year. Our recommendation is that you include family engagement funds in the LCAP because family engagement is crucial to student success. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alma Ortega.
Buenos tardes, miembros de la mesa directiva, Superintendentes Baker y personal. Mi nombre es Alma Ortega, madre de estudiantes de este distrito y miembro de Latinos in Action California. Y mi comentario es para LCAP 22-23. Me peticiono a ustedes es que contraten personal, que se enfoquen en informar, educar, apoyar a los aprendices multilingües y a sus familias para enseñarnos todo sobre el proceso de reclasificación. Y juntos, tanto los padres como estudiantes y maestros, logren que nuestros estudiantes reclasifiquen por lo menos al tercer grado. Teniendo una persona de contacto con las familias, seríamos muy beneficiadas, ya que podríamos reunirnos y tener seguimiento directo sobre los resultados o necesidades de los estudiantes multilingües. Por favor, incluyan estas recomendaciones al LCAP antes de la aprobación. Gracias por su tiempo y consideración.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Superintendent Baker and staff. My name is Alma Ortega, mother of students in the district and member of Latinos in Action California. My comment is for Article 13.1, the LCAP 2022-2023. My request to you is that you hire staff who focus on informing, educating, and supporting multilingual learners and their families to teach us all about the reclassification process and together, parents, students, and teachers, get our students reclassified by the third grade. We'd benefit from having a contact person with families since we can meet and have direct follow-up on the results or needs of our multilingual students. Please include these recommendations in the LCAP prior to approval. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelly Perez.
Hello and good afternoon, board members, staff, and attendees of this meeting. My name is Kelly Perez Castellanos, a student at Poly High School and a member of Latinos in Action California. My comment is for LCAP, again asking you to focus on tutoring and start taking responsibility for meeting the specific needs of multilingual learners. This recommendation has been made by both parents and students and has not yet been considered relevant. So many parents, including mine, can afford tutoring because in addition to having a high cost, they are in remote locations. And as a student and as a voice for my parents, I ask that you sign off on the LCAP. You consider investing in tutoring and not as a project, but as an ongoing program. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. And our last speaker for items listed on the agenda, Rosio Quintero.
My name is Rosio Quintero. I am a parent of two students, a third grader that could barely read, and a second grader that doesn't know how to read at all. You would think my children are an isolated case, but that's not the case. In fact, only 44% of Long Beach Unified School District students know how to read at grade According to an article in California Reading Commission, 67% of these children never catch up. It's time we change this statistics and do something. I am tired of our children being placed in the back burner. We need changes, we need accountability, we need transparency. We need them now. I send my kids to learn to school not because I need a babysitter. We need reading specialists for every child so they can at least read at grade level. How can we expect our children to excel when they don't even know how to read? Which leads me to the following questions. Why are ELAC funds used for all students when it should be used for what the funds were collected for, ELAC students? Also, why ELAC parents don't have a greater say where these funds go? Finally, I don't know any other job where management has 44% job efficiency and still gets a raise and bonuses. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will go to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. So please note that due to California law, we, the board, cannot enter into discussion on any items listed, not listed on the agenda, but board members or staff may ask clarifying questions or provide clarification regarding public comments. But such a discussion is limited. Each speaker will have up to three minutes, and we will have a total of 30 minutes for this subject. First, we will have Mr. Tom Patterson.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Patterson. I'm a product of the Long Beach Unified School District, K-12, Long Beach State, Southwestern Law School, USC Grad School. I raised my family here, I practice law here. And in the meantime, since the 60s, I have functioned at many levels, elementary, junior high, and high school age kids, boys and girls, in sports, focusing mostly on softball because of my daughter, baseball, and basketball. As a coach, I've realized the importance of team rules. And violations of the team rules, like in life, have consequences, such as the situation here today, presented with the issue of the firing of what, in my opinion, is the most successful Poly baseball coach since the 60s, and I have followed that. I was at Poly when John Herbald was there. And Mr. Lavoy has accomplished things that have never been accomplished before. I have observed him since he entered Poly. I have seen no example of racial prejudice. I have seen him inspire his teams. I've been to his banquets, I've been to his alumni games. And I am very aware of the issue presented to you today. It's the violation of team rules and the consequences suffered by the benching of a player. This is a very common consequence of the violation of a team rule. Indeed, Bill Powell, when he was here for 10 years, he benched DeShawn Jackson for the same thing. If you do not enforce the team rules, you lose the credibility of your team. And with Coach Lavoy, he has accomplished things that have raised the Poly baseball program to prominence, whereas for decades, they have suffered in mediocrity. I have seen it. I have talked to Bill Powell about Coach Lavoy being probably the most successful coach since Herbald, and he agrees, and he was here for 10 years. So I submit, and I ask the board, to have the courage to talk to the parents, talk to the kids, find out the true facts behind all of this, and have the courage to reinstate Coach Lavoy to the program that he has the passion for and he has raised to a position of prominence in this community. Thank you. I open myself to any questions you might have, which I think that doesn't happen here now. I've learned the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrew Nakamura.
Thank you for this, Andrew Nakamura. Thank you for this platform to share a three-minute testimony about Coach Lavoy. But first, let me set some context. I'm a father of an incoming freshman who by school of choice is making the Poly pace I'm a father of an incoming freshman who by school of choice is making the Poly pace choice. It is a gift of Long Beach Unified School District that allows and enables teenagers to make a choice about how they want to spend the next four years of their lives, how they see and see themselves into the fabric of society and the community, how they view investments today that will be fruitful tomorrow. We are thankful for this gift. In this choice, my son was able to visit the narrow downlist of schools, finding each of them offered high academic programs and championship-quality athletics. But there was one school that stood out, and he will tell you that Poly was not in the lead going into the Poly site visit. After attending the academic tracks, he headed over to the baseball table. He had prepared some questions about the program that he wanted to ask the coach. When are tryouts and how many catchers do you need? We have sports night in May and we will announce the schedule. I need as many catchers as possible. We can always use good catchers. Is there a summer league that would be, would you recommend in order to be prepared for trials? Not at this moment. Where are you playing now? A short conversation happened right after that. What characteristics are you looking to add for the program? We are looking for scholar athletes. We have players that give it their all in the classroom and on the field. Trust, respect and communications are foundations for this team on and off the field. What is missing today? Coach looks stumped. You. We need guys like you in the program. What are you most proud of, about in your student athletes? That they are students first and athletes second, and they enjoy being part of the team. Let me introduce you to some of the kids in the squad. So it's not just the answers that were most impressive, it was the difference that Coach Lavoy did not look at this kid as a prominent athlete, five-five, hundred fifteen pounds, Asian teenager, right? He invested in Aiden right from the start, from a human standpoint, forgetting possible athletic contribution, throwing away any pre-notions of size or titles or that could be won or lost. Instead, he started a relationship with him, right there. From that moment, the impact of Aiden's choice became all-in. His school of choice became Poly. That differentiator made, made, made his choice very clear. Now, as an incoming freshman who is still injured and in tryouts right now, he runs a risk of maybe not making the Poly team, and that's okay. This will not stop him or his choice.
I'm sorry, but that means your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have Stephanie Holder. Stephanie Holder.
Hello. Thank you for having us. My name is Stephanie Holder. I am here not only as a concerned parent from the baseball program at Long Beach Poly, but really as a concerned parent of Long Beach Poly as a whole and of the Long Beach Poly School District. I've served on PTA executive boards for a total of nine years in different schools in our district and believe in the role schools have in our kids' lives in teaching them about the importance of character and fairness. Coach Brent Lavoy was placed on administrative leave one week prior to the beginning of more league play. He returned from his fifty-five-day leave for the last week of regular season games, after an investigation found all concerns to be unsubstantiated. Coach Lavoy worked with these boys for seven months before the start of more league play. The preparation was the foundation for a historic undefeated more league season. This team went on a deep CIF playoff run and for the first time in Long Beach Poly history, a state playoff appearance. It was a memorable way to end the year. It had allowed the boys an opportunity to share a positive experience with Coach Lavoy and move past the many hardships of the season. We were back on a positive trajectory as a team and a program. The day after the school year ended, baseball families were informed that Coach Brent Lavoy had been relieved of his coaching responsibilities. I am unsure if I can adequately describe the shock not only my son felt at this news but every person in my family. Please, members of the school board, help us understand what happened here. An undefeated, history-making team, a coach absolved of undisclosed claims, a team thrilled to have him back. Was there equity in this investigation for Coach Brett Lavoy? Was there equity in this process for our baseball program? I love Long Beach Poly. I tell my kids every day, they are so fortunate to attend a school with such history, history and a reputation of excellence. I would not want anything to damage the credibility of this beloved institution. I believe that is exactly what has happened here. We urge you to ask questions and help us understand why and on what basis Brent Lavoy was fired as leader and coach of the Long Beach Poly baseball program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeff Champlin. Jeff Champlin.
Good evening, Superintendent Baker, President Craig, head members of the board. My name is Jeff Champlin and I stand before you this evening as a concerned Long Beach Poly parent and community member seeking to find common ground specifically on the matter of Mr. Lavoy's removal from the position of head baseball coach at Long Beach Poly Technical High School. Mr. Lavoy is the heart and soul of our baseball program since his arrival in two thousand sixteen. He is a well-respected member of the local and national coaching community. His on-the-field accomplishments are unrivaled, undeniable and well-documented. In the classroom, Mr. Lavoy is a teacher that works with special education students and is respected by his peers as someone who deeply cares about the kids. He is a man of great faith, someone who aspires to leave places better than he found them, has inspired us all as parents, players and families to do the same. In short, Mr. Lavoy is a leader and a role model of the highest order. But tonight is not about listing Mr. Lavoy's accomplishments. Tonight, this is about something bigger. This is about the kids. If we are truly committed as our roles as board members, teachers and parents, then we are all linked through a common thread, seeking what is best for our children. These are the, these are the kids that have endured some of the most unimaginable learning experiences of our lifetime during the COVID pandemic, battling learning loss fallout and the loss of loved ones. The same kids that have learned to live with anxiety, uncertainty and the unknown, only to be told this is the new normal. The same kids that have seen a steady stream of talented educators leave the profession, the same kids that lost their twenty-twenty athletic season to the pandemic only to see their senior season riddled with controversy and the loss of their leader. The same kids that rose to the challenge of losing their home field and the same kids that overcame this inequity to put together one of the greatest baseball seasons in modern more league history. But this should not surprise us. This is not simply sheer luck. This ability to overcome adversity is the culture Mr. Lavoy has built and cultivated since his arrival in two thousand sixteen. These kids do not deserve another adversity thrown their way, especially when this situation is something that is clearly within your control. I implore you as board members, leaders and parents to ask yourself some tough questions. What would you do in my position? If Mr. Lavoy is being asked to remain as a special education teacher and entrusted to positively impact the lives of those children, then why is he not being allowed to provide that same impact on the lives of the baseball players and lead this program? Despite all Mr. Lavoy's been through, this is not a man that is giving up on Long Beach Poly or these kids. We humbly ask you to right this wrong, remedy the situation and reinstate Mr. Lavoy as head baseball coach of Long Beach Poly baseball. On February sixth, nineteen sixty-eight, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. spoke these words. I find these are just as powerful and applicable fifty-five years later. On some positions, cowardice asks the question, is it safe? Expediency asks the question, is it politic? Vanity asks the question, is it popular? But conscience asks the question, is it right? And there comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe nor politic nor popular, but he must take it because conscience tells him it is right. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, it is never too late to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Matt Simon. Matt Simon. Matt Simon.
Matt Simon, proud parent of twenty nineteen graduate Jesse Simon and twenty twenty-three graduate with highest honors, Jay Simon. I'm also a local, been, been part of the community and resident for twenty-three years and a volunteer board member at Boys and Girls Clubs for fifteen or eighteen years, whatever it's been. My family's been with Coach Lavoy his entire seven-years tenure here at, at Poly, and Coach has always insisted and gotten the best out of his players through hard work, being coachable and being a good teammate. He went above and beyond with students needing extra assistance and treated everyone fairly. He also worked with other teachers to insert, ensure success in the classroom, again, for all of his players. Since our boys were very young, my wife and I, we'll hear from her shortly, have taught them that hard work, being a good student and a good teammate will lead to success. They're also taught that their actions have consequences and they would need to be responsible for those actions, and they have been on occasion. The administration at Poly has done just the opposite. The example they have demonstrated is if you complain, do what you want, how you want, with no regard to others, you will be rewarded. Even after being put on leave, as you've heard, for seven weeks, Coach was exonerated of all those claims and came back to the classroom and field welcoming players and parents. He coached the boys to the playoffs, was voted Coach of the Year by six other coaches in the more league, which honored, earned him the honor of coaching in the All-Star Game. But the administration at Poly decided he was not worthy of coaching the All-Star Game with no reason given except we don't believe he deserves it. I ask you, do the administrators at Poly get to act on their own whims with all the sports teams regardless of what the other schools and coaches and families believe? Do the wishes of the fifty-one players and families get overridden by one and an administrator that has not supported the team for years? Do they get to act in a silo with no input from others? Are any of the other coaches required to CC administration on all correspondence with players and families? Are other coaches prohibited from texting players individually? These are now requirements for our interim coach as well, but only for the Poly baseball coach, nobody else, no other team. Doesn't seem very equitable to me. I urge you to reopen the investigation and include the administration at Poly in such an investigation. They had the facts and they knew Coach was cleared, but they still acted in a retaliatory manner against him. Again, the Poly administration had documented facts of misbehavior, four years' worth in fact, but they chose a political viewpoint over the facts. Coach has always held his players accountable, all of them equally, all the time. We've been unwavering advocates for Poly, including the CIC program and many quality teachers that we have met. We cannot ever say the same for the administration. Their actions are already having negative outcomes and that we've already heard of parents taking their kids to other schools now because of this situation. I also urge you to investigate Administrator Matt Brown, and I have a witness to this. He has stated in public settings, and I quote, "Racism has been an ongoing issue with Coach Lavoy in the Poly baseball program." Nothing's further from the truth. Ask E.J. Andrews, Noah Brown, or the others.
Thank you. Huan Chu Simon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Huan Chu Simon and I am here as a concerned parent of the Poly baseball program. Concerned about the well-being of the players, players who have endured so much this past season, for some, their entire high school years. COVID, losing out the first year of baseball, not being able to play at their home field this past season, a field they were so proud of. On top of that, they're losing their head coach Brent Lavoy for almost the entire season, a mentor these players looked up on for many years, on and off the field. I wish you all had a chance to witness the look on these players' faces when Coach Lavoy was reinstated. Cleared of all accusations, the joy on their faces was priceless, but there was sadness behind it too. Sad that the Coach Lavoy came back on their last regular season game, sad that they lost so much time with him, sad that they didn't get to share all the winning games with Coach who has instilled a great work ethic, a coach who encouraged them to do the right thing, to support one another and be great teammates. The players continue to practice what they were taught even when Coach Lavoy was not around due to his investigation. It is because these players were coached and guided properly by Lavoy, a result, result of all his hard work and dedication to these young men and the program he has built for the last seven years, a program he is so passionate about and truly cared about. I am confused as to why, after Coach Lavoy was reinstated, cleared of all the accusations, he gets terminated from coaching. Not only that, after being named Coach of the Year, he was also denied coaching the All-Stars. Talk about major emotional roller coaster this has put all the players into. How much work can the kids take? Lastly, Mr. Salas has said numerous times how he cared about the well-being of all athletes in the program, but he's actually said something else. If he truly cared, he would have been advocating for Coach Lavoy, advocating to get the baseball field fixed, would have been asking every player how they all were doing, would have met with all parents and not just one. I want to ask you all, does Mr. Salas involve himself in every sport in Poly? Does he dictate the lineups to all sports or is it just with baseball? The unfair treatment of this program by the Poly administrators is so obvious, I beg you, this needs to be looked at. Thank you so much.
Thank you. L. Higbee. L. Higbee.
Board members, my name is Mix Higbee. I am a teacher at Milliken High School. I'm a product of Long Beach and I live here in Long Beach as well. Not speaking on these issues here about Poly, but rather at Milliken, I am the advisor of the GSA Club, the Gender and Sexual Alliance Club. Here during Pride Month, figured this would be appropriate time to bring this up because our community, our students are terrified. We are afraid of threats to our community around this country, not just in states on the other side of this country, but right around here in our own home, of violence against our community that's happened here in Long Beach. Firstly, I'd like to commend the district, commend the board for policies that have benefited not just our LGBTQ students, but all students. You have a policy of like the wellness center in partnering with outside organizations such as the LGBTQ Center. These wellness centers are a place that I can send students when they're having a bad day and sometimes these last couple of days, years, there have been some really bad days. Secondly, I'd like to commend the district on the construction of several all-gender restrooms and other facilities around the district. Speaking from my own personal experience as a non-binary individual, as a student from this district, using the restrooms can be very scary. That's not just true for LGBTQ students, not just true for our trans students, it's true for all students. Nextly, an area where I'd like to see the district grow, and I know this is something that costs money, is to reinstate a health class, not just a month-long unit in biology, but a true inclusive, comprehensive health class. Our biology teachers, my coworkers are not prepared for that class and they were incredibly overwhelmed by what was put on them. Finally, this district needs to implement a clear and communicate a clear plan to address hate speech. Even here in Long Beach, the words that our students hear directed at them would break your heart. These are not just words from other students, these are words from teachers as well. These are words that when they are reported, these words are often swept under the rug, swept on the rug by teachers, by administrators, by the district as a whole. We need a plan to support all of our students and to make sure that hate speech is not tolerated, genuinely not tolerated in this district. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Maria Torres.
Good afternoon, board members. Mr. Miller, I see that you're friends with Mr. Bird, and honestly, I'm gonna say that the gesture you made when he came in gave me the chills. I am here as a worried and very concerned baseball Poly parent because I don't know what's going on, how things are being handled and who's doing it. All I know is that one day, our head coach, Brent Lavoy, is taken away from the team, then two and a half months later is allowed to come back and cleared of all allegations to then be permanently removed. We are very confused about these actions, especially- We are very confused about these actions, especially because he's a teacher and he's still teaching at Poly, but he's not allowed to coach. Again, who's making these decisions? Is it Poly's principal? Is it the district? All I know is that after Coach was allowed to come back, things were different, and it felt like everyone was being watched, including the parents. When we addressed this at the administration, we were told that people were there to get the whole story if anything happened. Even where our weekly emails came from, it was a different. I spoke to Principal Salas a few times about my concerns regarding Coach Lavoy being gone and the negative impact that it was causing on our kids. Sad to say that I honestly think that he didn't care about what we had to say in the well-being of our kids in the baseball program. This year, our kids learn more than just about baseball and the baseball field, but they also learn the importance of accountability, and unfortunately, they also learn that it doesn't matter if you do good and you do the right thing, that you might still get punished for something you didn't do. And it's so sad that a 16, 17, 18-year-olds will learn something like this in school. It honestly breaks my heart that a lot of them are heading to college with this lesson, but things don't have to stay this way. Please help us reinstate Poly head coach Brent Lavoy immediately. He's a great coach that has done a lot for the baseball program at Poly, who has won three championships since he's been there. A coach that really cares about the players and their well-being, who I know has gone above and beyond to help players be good students, to be eligible to play. I have one student in particular that comes to mind. Also, it makes me really sad that no one in the administration figured out that we needed our team pictures. Last, I got an email purchased, I got an email to purchase tickets, to purchase pictures, and then when I went to the site, I realized that our baseball team never even took pictures. Our administrators, knowing that our coach was gone, didn't take it upon themselves to let that happen, and as a parent, that matters to me.
Just really quickly, this is not in context to the response. I just wanted to reaffirm that there are multiple people in the audience that I'm familiar with, and I say hello to everyone as people who know me. That is what I do when I come in. So if I know someone from the community or from the board meetings, it is important for me, and culturally I've been taught, to just recognize them and make sure that they feel seen, as I spoke to earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jen Ritz.
Okay, I'll send an email if I go too long. Here we go. My name's Jennifer Ritz. I'm a mom of two kids of Long Beach Unified School District. I'm also a teacher and a union representative, so I am quite familiar with the practices of investigations and administrative leaves. And of course, I have some problems with the way those are done. Okay, already two of my kids, only two, have already had two teachers removed just this school year abruptly, with very little and inadequate effort to ameliorate the uncertainty and anxiety that that creates for them. And I can only imagine what it was like for SDC students when Brent Lavoy was removed because we know that those high-needs students need relationships developed over time, and then all of a sudden, they're given a sub, and I don't know how that serves their needs. Okay? We've already talked about all the uncertainty and disruption that our students have faced over the course of the following years, but now my rising senior is also facing the uncertainty of what's going to happen next year. His baseball program has been destabilized by Mr. Salas by making an independent decision to pull Lavoy from that teaching position. We know that there were allegations, and as a result of allegations, a very expensive and lengthy investigation was conducted, and it disrupted the education of approximately 50 SDC learners, 52 scholar athletes, for a total of 55 days. Okay? I have a reasonable expectation that my tax dollars, if used for an investigation, will lead to findings that everybody will honor. Okay? If the findings of an independent legal investigation can be overturned by a single administrator based upon a less than one-hour conversation, then I feel that the whole evidence collected and data and money spent and time spent was a waste and, for no reason, provided harm to over 100 students and their families. I ask that this board make it a point that the findings of an investigation should serve as the basis on which assistance, discipline, or employment decisions are made. Mr. Salas imposed directives on Coach Lavoy that were rooted in the allegations, even though the findings of those investigations found the allegations to be unsubstantiated. That is literally the equivalent of being told, "Don't go near banks," even though, or because I was accused of robbing a bank, but I didn't rob the bank and I had an alibi, but still don't go near banks, right? You can't give, you can't make directives based on allegations, especially if they've been proven unsubstantiated. Okay? Regarding rights and due process, most of you are aware of Miranda rights. Hopefully, you're aware also of Weingarten rights. The difference, of course, is that Weingarten rights does not legally make a manager responsible for informing an employee that a conversation is going to be used for disciplinary purposes. But what about an ethical responsibility to inform your employee before engaging in an investigatory discussion? Okay? We have a code of ethics with our district that highlights the principles of respect, honesty, trustworthiness, courtesy, integrity, fairness, compassion. But instead of embodying those principles, an administrator cornered an employee and questioned him with intentions of using his answers as evidence to support disciplinary actions against that employee.
I'm sorry, but that's your time.
It's okay. I'll send an email. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker we have is Jason King.
Having me, basically, for a lot of us, baseball's year-round. This just doesn't start and end with the school year. We do this constantly. For years, I've been taking my kid to play baseball. Every year, at one of their, our public fields, Lavoy would come up and speak at closing ceremonies. And that is one of the reasons we ended up at Poly. We could have went anywhere for high school, presumably, but the guy has been so positive and so inspirational every time he speaks. Every season, when it came to an end, he was always there. He would talk longer than anybody and any of the other coaches from the high school. He was so positive and really, you know, brought it home, made us want to go to Poly High School. Now, Lavoy is a very great coach. Obviously, I'm not going to get into it. You've already heard all his great things he's accomplished, but now we don't have that coach. We really want him back, and there's been no transparency. We haven't talked to, no phone calls from the principal. Mr. Salas appears if he does not like baseball, the way he's treated our program over here. Now, if this would have been the football team, the field would have been hemmed up real quick and, you know, they would have been playing football games. But no, we didn't get that kind of treatment for our baseball program. And, you know, I think the district or the principal, they use the parents' transparency of what happened. No communication, you know, the not getting our baseball photos is terrible, terrible. That's just unacceptable. I would like to yield the rest of my time to any of the other parents out here that would like to speak.
Hi, everybody. Okay. One minute, two seconds. All right, all right. Let's see, I said the findings, I did said that already. Okay, so rights and due process and Weingarten rights, okay? We're not familiar with that. Employees have the right to be informed, right? If an investigation or an interview is going to be leading to disciplinary actions, there's not a legal responsibility on the part of management, but there should be an ethical responsibility to do so. I do ask that we make it a point as a district to respect employee rights and inform a teacher, an employee, when an interview is disciplinary in nature. Make Weingarten rights known to all your faculty instead of using their ignorance as a weapon in an arsenal of punishment. To validate the disruption that was caused by Lavoy's removal, I have a few asks of this board. I would like you to please revisit the investigative findings of that 55-day investigation. Please ensure that directives and the discipline were actually commensurate with the findings and not with the allegations. I ask that you revisit as well what guidance and assistance resulted from those findings.
Thank you. You know, that caught me off guard yielding your time to another speaker. For future reference, we will not be doing that. We will not be allowing a person to come back and use the rest or the remainder of somebody else's time. I'm just going to put that out there right now. As far as everything that's been said, thank you for being here. Everyone's in support, obviously, and you have all spoken with great passion. I think one thing I will ask for clarification on, Dr. Camarino, is there any way we can look into the families receiving those pictures?
They're never taken.
They're never taken? Photos were never taken?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm sorry to hear that, and I don't know if there's anything that can be done now that the school year has ended. I don't know if that's going to help with the photos. So we will proceed with the agenda. Next, we have Consent Calendar A. This consent calendar groups the approval of routine agenda items into one action for efficiency and to allow the board to focus our meetings more on student outcomes and other key issues of the district. Do we have any comments from the board or clarifying questions on the consent calendar?
I do. On item number 13.4, number three, the approval of supplemental elementary English language arts text. Can high school teachers submit additional books for approval? Or can we add language that allows for that? Yes, on the approval of supplemental, on number three, item 13.4, approval of supplemental elementary English language arts text, my question is, can high school teachers submit additional books for approval, or can we add language that allows for them to do so?
I don't know the specific answer to your question, but teachers are involved in supplemental text selection, so I'll have to follow up with Dr. Kael on the specific question that you're asking.
Okay. And then on that same, on items five through eight, on the approval of new middle school elective courses, it looks like that the, we're bringing the pathways down to the middle school level. And I guess my question is, does this mean that we're going to have CTE teachers teaching these courses at the middle school level? First question, and then the second question is, are these courses offered, will be offered at all of the middle schools?
So they don't require a CTE credential? They're exploratory classes, like an exploratory elective? What was the second question?
And will they be offered in all of the middle schools?
I'd have to ask. We'd have to look at the course sequences for every middle school. Once they're in the course, the course guidebook, schools can select from those courses, but likely they will not be, just to clarify, I can let you know which of the schools will have these courses, but they will not all be offered at every school, if that's the question. Is that the question?
Yes, that was my question.
They won't all be offered at every school.
Okay, and then on item 13.6, number 15, the approval of the grant or the grant proposal. And so it looks like this grant is intended to support the development of a K-14 CTE-aligned pathway with a budget of $130,000. And just clarify that if, once this funding is gone, will the district then continue funding this position?
Typically, when something's grant-funded, it is not, it does not continue to be funded once the grant runs out. In this case, it's likely seeding the development of something, and then once the grant goes away, the position wouldn't be continued. In some cases, with consultation, the curriculum office, if there is a need to continue support in that curricular area, we will look at whether it would continue or not. But the specifics to this position, after the grant funds run out, likely would not continue.
Okay. And I did ask because the language in the document does allude to the, to the fact that it would continue.
And do you have other questions?
I actually do. On item 13.7, number six, eight, 12, and 29, we're hiring interpreting services, contracts in the amount of $90,000, $75,000, $15,000, and then we're increasing from $65,000 to $80,000. So it's roughly about $260,000. And so I guess my question is, this is on top of the interpreters that we have here, and do we have, is there a need for more interpreters in the district, clearly?
So the contracts that you referenced are to support overage, which means services that are needed beyond the staff that we have to provide them. As our engagement efforts have increased, there's been a need for more interpreters to support that. We also have, we use the contracted services to support very uncommon or unique languages that require substantial amount of support. So that's the reason that we have the additional contracts.
Okay, and then one more question in this section is on number, item 19. It's a contract with USC to provide 17 college advisors for high schools at a cost of $1,675,690. And so I guess my clarification is, these positions are, we're using LCFF funds. This is the last year. What happens after the funding is gone?
So LCFF funds don't go away. That's our district general fund. Essentially, it's our district general fund. This is a specialized contract with USC to keep our college and career centers serviceable for all of our students. They provide FAFSA support, direct connection to colleges and universities for enrollment purposes, and the college and career specialists actually participate in training that's provided. So they aren't making a pipeline to USC, I think, which is sometimes, some people think because they're USC college advisors, they just are trained in a special skill set that is a connection to high schools to help them into the pipeline of community colleges and colleges, and support all of the things that students need as juniors and seniors in particular as they apply for college.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, colleagues, do we have any other questions or comments before we take a vote? Then we, oh, or we need a motion, actually.
Move to approve Consent Calendar A. Second.
Oh, we do have a question with Mr. Otto.
Actually, I was going to make the motion or the second, but it's already been done, so.
Well, thank you anyway, but I will ask our board secretary to take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Benitez?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
And student member Lopez, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0.
Thank you. Now we move to Consent Calendar B. Mr. Miller, do you have a comment?
Thank you. I recuse myself from Consent Calendar B as I have a potential conflict of interest under Government Code Section 1090 and 87-100. SoCal Gas provides services to the Long Beach Unified School District and has, in the last 12 months, provided a donation to the nonprofit corporation Rancho's Los Amigos Foundation, which I am the CEO.
Thank you. I will need a motion.
Move to approve Consent Calendar B.
Any further discussion or comments?
I do have a question on item 16.1, the, on the LCAP, the Goal Action for Tutoring Support.
Actually, I'm going to stop you because we're on Consent Calendar B.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay. Any discussion on Consent Calendar B? Okay, then we will ask our board secretary to take a roll call vote.
Member Benitez?
Aye. Sorry, let me see. I was like, did we vote on Consent Calendar A or?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote aye on Consent Calendar.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Okay, I do need clarification. So, we are voting on Consent Calendar B?
Correct.
And you're telling me that sixteen point one is not part of Consent Calendar B? Is that correct?
That's correct. Fourteen point one is Consent Calendar B.
Okay, then my vote is aye.
Member Miller? Oh, you're abstaining, sorry. Member Otto?
Aye.
And student member Lopez, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes four with one abstention.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a staff report. Dr. Baker, would you like to lead us off?
Great, thank you. So before I start, I'd like the opportunity for Ms. Caverly and team from Wilson and Ms. Sykes from the Research Office come up towards the front because you're going to shortly be joining us for our conversation. So I have the pleasure tonight of kicking off our end-of-year discussion, our conversation around social emotional learning and culture climate data. This is a rapport that reflects the end-of-year, or actually the entire year's survey, our poll survey and our core survey, that are actually two separate, two separate entities. The slides that you're receiving right now are the same slides that were in your board packet, and they have page numbers. So there's nothing different about the slides, except they have page numbers. You also should have a supplemental packet in front of you that just, that actually allows you to see the questions that are asked of students on the poll survey by level, elementary and then middle and high schools. I'll make reference to those, but they're for, they're for yours to, to take and, and look at.
An upgraded version, I love it.
Yes, and upgraded, and they have handwritten numbers on them because some numbers are better than no numbers, all right? So kicking off tonight, a conversation around social emotional learning and culture climate. A few things that I am just going to share as you think about this data, or to give you to think about this data, the feature tonight, and I just want you to kind of hold this, is going to be this, the school sharing with us, a school sharing with us, how they use this data in service to their students. And so I'll be fairly brief in the overview of the data that you have before you. As you know, social emotional learning is a critical aspect of our students' learning experience and their school experience. And in some cases, we'll hear staff talk about social emotional learning separate from academics, but our goal in the work that we're doing now is to elevate social emotional learning right alongside academic learning, because we know from research that social emotional learning has a lot to do with student success. And so if you're in classrooms in LaBiche Unified, you'll hear teachers pausing for aspects of instruction related to social emotional learning. Social emotional learning skills are built into the, the units and lessons that teachers have in support of their, their classroom work. And so, we can look at social emotional learning from the lens discreetly through things that students can tell us about their experience, and we can look at the connection between social emotional learning and student success. So tonight is really an opportunity for us to look at a macro level around student wellness and wellbeing in three areas that are part of Goal Two in our district goals. The survey that is reflected in the data that you have tonight, just a reminder, and these are things that have been presented before, but just really want to set a context, that this, the survey that is, we call our poll survey, this is our first year of full implementation. So we did a pilot last June, heard from students about what it was like to take that survey, actually went back to our student advisory, to my student advisory, and asked them to help to really think about the way the questions were crafted. The result of that was actually students asked us to have an open-ended question where they could actually share some feelings, share something that might be of personal nature, and asked for the opportunity for them to connect to staff. And so, what you don't have before you are some of the other ways that this survey allows students to ask for help, to ask for resources, and to make direct connections to wellness off, wellness centers, to counseling staff, to social workers, to psychologists, that aren't shown in the data. And actually, we may hear from, from others about the use of the data in that way. So what we can see tonight from our social emotional data is a lot of stability and state, a really high level, because the story in this data is really when we get to the classroom and to the school level, and to look at how teachers and school teams are working with students around their site-specific data. At, starting with personal identity and actually looking in the, the next two areas that are represented in agency and belonging, it's pretty easy to see that through this year there wasn't, there weren't great dips in the data, and there also weren't great areas of growth. That's not a bad thing, and actually, we're learning more and more about the, the monitoring of social emotional learning as a leading indicator at the school level, that great growth and dips are actually not expected. And in some ways, as we study our own data and work with the staff at Panorama and others, we can actually, we have actually come to know that as students get older, in some cases, you can actually anticipate and expect, and you want dips in some of the way that they respond to questions. So, I want, I'm not gonna go down into the question level, but just to say tremendously stable data overall in the three areas that we're paying particular attention to. The idea of a poll survey can, you can think of it as taking the pulse on student wellness in these three areas regarding identity, sense of belonging, and agency. Those three areas have a lot to do with how our students experience their school. And so, Frani, I'm just gonna give a prompt in a moment, so you can think about this, but think about your experience in taking the poll survey this year, and anything that as we, before I pass to Dr. Brown, if anything you might want to share about your experience in taking the poll survey at, at Jordan this past year. Most important to the data that we see, especially when we don't see big gains or any significant dips, is to really know that this data should be used, as you're gonna hear Wilson's team talk about, should be used to derive student actions that are associated with student voice, as well as input from students in, when I think about agency, agency is that students know how to take action, and they are engaged in a process of being able to use their voice for good. So in, before I, before I come to you, Frani, and ask you about that, you'll see that the questions that are in elementary, middle, and high school in your addendum, there, there is quite a bit of overlap for what elementary students, middle school students, and high school students answer, and there are some variations in the way that students are asked so that the questions are age-appropriate. Let's see. Two of the ways that you can see across, uh-oh, there we go, across the areas that we look at and that school teams can look at, are looking at a topic such as interpersonal relationships. Chris, the slides aren't advancing, so you can advance that one, thank you. That a school can look at their data across the different areas, so in this case, you can see a, a school has access and teachers have access to, to questions that relate to interpersonal relationships, but across belonging and agency. All right, click, thank you, and you can go to the next slide. And then our school teams have an option to drill down in their data to look at groups of students, which you can see in this slide reflects a very, looking across the same areas, but for African-American or Black students, to look at trends. So, three questions that pertain to interpersonal relationships, but drawn from the three areas that we're looking at, and then being able to monitor both at the all-student level, but also for African-American, Black students. And you're actually gonna hear a really specific story that Wilson can tell tonight about the way that they've, the way that they've used this data. Something that I think's important in looking, I, I went back and thinking about just the results that we're seeing, that there's a, a really strong connection to the graduate portrait that has been approved by the board as part of the vision. So, in the areas that we think about, the graduate portrait, equity and inclusion leader, ethical problem solver, future-ready adult, resilient, mindful, and thriving self-advocate, interdependent collaborator. So if you, sometimes I think SCL is referred to as soft skills. These are not soft skills. These are the skills that our graduates need to be successful adults. And there is a, there is a direct mapping that our, actually, our Research Office is, is doing at this time to that graduate portrait, and what it means to actualize the elements of a graduate portrait in a classroom as they learn the skills of social emotional learning. So, before we pass to, before I pass it to Dr. Brown to introduce the next aspect of this presentation, I'll turn to Frani, is there anything that you want to just share about your experience in taking the poll survey? And you might also share, so part of my work with my student advisory was to take the site's data, their site report, and work with about twenty-five students at every site around what their site data was showing, and talk with students about what action, what actions could be taken based on the site-specific data. So, I'll turn it to you to see if there's anything that you'd like to share.
I believe I've taken all post, poll surveys this year. I think there's three. I've noticed that the questions have been changed, and it's actually something that the students at the RCP committee brought up, that the questions were kind of like, really vague, they couldn't really relate, and it's only until the questions that are more personalized that results more accurately reflecting students actually show something. And as I can see from the, the trend, Goal Two, SCL agent, well, page four and five, it seems to be the results, they seem to be raising, and I'd say it's because of student maturity as they progress throughout their grade level, especially seniors and juniors. I feel like their experiences will definitely change, and I would say that's, their maturity and progression within their grade reflects on the results that we see, which is raising. And I wouldn't say it would be lowering. It seems really steady, and it's just, it reflects accurately, well, through the change of students progressing into their school life. I can't really word it as well, but, also, our student, at the last, at the RCP committee meeting at Jordan, there was a lot of discussion over things that could be done to change and to probably like increase engagement and self, self, sense of belonging in their school environment. And I remember talking about having a, like, these sort of classes where you can try different pathways, not necessarily like changing your pathway, like taking like some sort of elective, I'm sorry, I can't really word this well. I have a lot of ideas, okay, a lot of memories. But yeah, I'd say our students are more like, ever since that meeting happened, ASV and also our student ambassadors have been more committed onto actually reaching out to our students and seeing what is, what are the things that they want. And I've also talked to Ms. Irving about having this sort of like, introducing a sort of program or elective, where you could actually see, take classes, at least one elective type of class, in order to see other pathways, as you know, like, you have to commit to a pathway, but like, if you're unsure, having this sort of option could be a beneficial type of class to have, especially since we're so young and we don't exactly know, we just put on the spot, especially after middle school. And it's nice to see that our students are considering to be more engaged, especially after the RCP meeting, RCP committee meeting at Jordan. I guess that's it.
Yeah, and I, so thank you for sharing your firsthand experience. As was said earlier, to be able to turn to a student who actually took the survey and talk about how that survey data was used at your school for improvement is really important, and it demonstrates agency, as you also demonstrate agency. And so thank you for being able to do that. I'll, I'll just hold the thinking because that kind of experience is what we're also going to hear about in a really important story, to move from the macro level of this data, which is very stable, and which in many cases, Panorama and others would say that it is, that the data that we're seeing at the district level is very high. That's good, but what's more important is that at the individual school level, especially with groups of students, that our schools have data that tells them how their students at their building are doing, and can use it in the way that you've described, Frani, and that we're also going to hear from the Wilson team. So, with that in mind, Dr. Brown, I'll pass to you for the next kind of section of this agenda item, and.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And Frani, thank you for participating in a little pop quiz on the very last night that you're with us this evening. Now that you're a high school graduate, the memories are very far away from you, so we appreciate you. It struck me, as I start to talk about sense of belonging and introduce the next section of the presentation, what you said earlier about your experience as a student board member, and the way that when you began that experience, you had more relationship, you were more connected, your confidence grew, and those are some of the attributes of sense of belonging. So you were actually already earlier this evening in your comments, giving us a great example of what happens when we offer those opportunities to our students. And that's really what the next section of the presentation and the sharing is about this evening, is about going deeper than the numbers can go, and calling in some of the stories that we really greatly benefit from, the stories of our students. Because through the data, the quantitative data that we have, we can analyze and make assumptions, but we need the students' voices, the engagement that they have, the sharing that they offer to us, and the way that they can relate their experience and connect their experience to be able to really make those larger connections to the work that we're trying to do. So, with that, I'm really grateful to have Missy Sykes, who is a program evaluation and data coach from the Research Office, and to go a bit deeper in the data, and specifically wanting to uplift and center the experiences of Black students. Missy did something that she's going to describe for you that involved a series of focus groups with students to really pare back, or peel back, the stories that we were hearing from the data that we had, and to use that information so that we can plan even a bit further. And following Missy's sharing, we're gonna be asking Ms. Caverly and Mr. Evans from Wilson to come up and hear even a, a little bit deeper, boots-on-the-ground perspective of the efforts that have been made at Wilson in support of and coming alongside the experience of Black students on the campus. So, Missy, thank you for coming out of summer vacation, on your, I think your third day away, to be here with us this evening. We appreciate you already.
You're very welcome. Good evening, board members, executive staff, and members of our community. I'm, I'm really grateful to be here tonight to share some of the experiences that I heard from our Black students. The, the purpose of, of the focus groups was to find out what works at our different school sites as far as increasing a sense of belonging among African-American or Black students. And so what we did was, members of the Research Team got together and looked at the poll survey data, which is what Dr. Baker referred to, and we looked specifically at schools that had, had a high rate of completion, survey completion, but we looked at schools that had a higher population of African-American students. And then we looked down at, at some of the, the survey strands to look for some patterns. And so that's how we came up with a list of, of schools to, to meet with, or students to meet with from these schools. So the schools are Hoover, Hughes, Jefferson, and Lindbergh, Jordan, and Wilson from the high school level. So we, we focused on secondary students, not elementary. And so what you see on the screen there is just how the, some of the students identi, a lot of the students identified themselves. So those are the themes there that we saw in the data. So with focus groups, we look at qualitative data, right? So we're not looking at numbers, we're looking at themes, and looking at quotes. Can I go ahead and move to the next slide? Because the focus of this presentation is on a sense of belonging. And so you're gonna see a theme around relationships throughout the presentation. So a positive and welcoming classroom environment, relationships with staff, especially with teachers, was huge. And so here are some quotes, I'll just go ahead and read. The first one there, it says, "You can just talk to her whenever you are going through something, like she's there, even if she's teaching class and you just tell her, like, can we step out and talk? She'll do that." Even if she's teaching class and you just tell her, like, "Can we step out and talk?" She'll do that. She doesn't put you in a hole. And that's from a student at Jordan High School. So taking that time to listen to students, connect with them. Students described teachers and staff that they really connected with, people that would just, that they could talk to about anything, that there was a friendly interaction. One student said that they are joyful, they put humor into it, but they are serious when they need to be. So students had a really good sense of, we want to connect with our teachers, but we also want to be held accountable for our work. And, and it was, it was really nice listening to them share their experiences. Go ahead and forward it here. Another theme that came out from the data was importance of Black staff members. And so students connect with individuals that share a culture, a common culture, common experience with them. They described relationships with Black staff in which they felt like they were really loved and cared for. So that's why you see those bullet points there. And so when we probed a little further and we said, you know, "Why is it important for you to have a Black adult on-site that you can talk to?" They said, "Because you can't always go to somebody else that doesn't know what you are feeling." So again, that shared experience makes them feel comfortable to discuss their culture and their experiences with staff members. Sports teams, that was another theme. And the students would, you know, at different sites, when we, they'd bring up sports and their experiences and they would describe their teammates as family members. So they would say brothers, we're sisters, we hang out off the court, off the field, we help each other with academics, socially. And they also described their teachers as, not their teachers, I'm sorry, their coaches as mentors. And, and then they also described how they really appreciate it when staff members come out to support them and talk to them. And so there's a, there is a quote there from Wilson High, Ms. Caverly would do that. She'd show up at the game, show spirit and stuff. She would talk to us like in a friendly way. So like, I like that, like how they want to connect with us. So I thought that was very neat. And of course, celebrating and learning about Black history and culture. The students get to celebrate who they are, right? So that they feel valued and that creates a sense of belonging. There are a lot of different ways that the, the sites that we looked into and met with students do this, whether it's Black History Month, which takes place at all the different sites, or the Black Student Achievement Group at Jefferson. At that, this particular group mentioned that the parents come together, the students come together, and they talk about how they can improve Jefferson, but they also learn about scholarship opportunities. And so it's another way of, of creating this sense of community and a sense of belonging. Young Gifted and Talented Black History and Performing Club at Hughes, they are provided with tutoring, but they also go out into the community. They perform and they teach community, community members about Black history and culture. So there's that sense of agency there as well. And then Young Black Scholars at Wilson High. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about that because we have guest speakers from Wilson who are going to go into detail. But the Step Show was very, very popular, successful, African drum and dance. So these are just a few examples of how students are allowed to celebrate their culture. All right. I'm going to stop there since we have individuals from Wilson.
So I have the pleasure. Thank you, Missy, and please stand by for questions on your summer vacation. We appreciate you so much. Ms. Caverly, Mr. Evans, please come on up. I have the pleasure of really, no introductions needed, but honoring the work of these two folks. The truth is that they would probably feel more comfortable in the sharing if there were about five hundred students standing with them. Is that right? Yeah, it would be a lot more comfortable, I know. And they will take no credit for the work that they've done this year. But the work that they have done this year to really create a story of relationship, of connection, of joy, of celebration has been unprecedented. And a number of us who are here have had opportunity to participate in some of the really amazing celebrations and sharing that you have created for Black students on the Wilson campus. And so we've asked you to come this evening and share about that experience and also really to highlight the way that the work that you have done has not only done what you intended to do, which was to lift the sense of belonging of African-American students at Wilson, but to actually lift the sense of belonging of all the students in doing that. So thank you so much for being with us this evening and take it away.
Thank you. Well, good evening. Thank you so much for having us. President Craighead, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Baker, senior team. And thank you, Ms. Sykes, for inviting us. We, we truly are honored to, you know, be called out to have this opportunity to share what is a story of just really love and joy that we've gotten to experience with our kids. So Mr. Evans and I are here to share about student voice and collaboration and how that really transformed the, the experience of our students at, at Wilson and really transformed our whole community. So through student listening and response sessions, through student-led professional development, new school-wide systems, activities, celebrations, our data demonstrates that our students are more connected to one another. They're more connected to adults. And probably my, my favorite piece of data is the significant outcome that our students are reporting that they feel more equipped and empowered to speak out about racism. So I have the privilege of working every day with my treasured friend and colleague Jonathan Evans. So I'm going to be sharing briefly about some of our data. And then Mr. Evans is going to be sharing really the good part, which is the examples of our work and the exciting things that he's been doing with our students. So I'm going to show you just four simple pieces of data. Oh, the big button is the one that goes forward. That's lovely. Okay. So just four pieces of data. And Dr. Baker was really showing you a lot of pieces of the pulse survey data. And what Mr. Evans and I used in this presentation and really how we set our goals when I first arrived at Wilson was through our core survey data. And the questions are somewhat different while the concepts are the same. So that's what you're going to see in our data is the core survey data. So behind these numbers, though, are people. And they're students, and they're students with stories. And some of our students have really complex stories of marginalization, of exclusion, and really of harm by a system that doesn't always know the best ways to serve them. And so when I'm looking at this data, you know, I'm really thinking about, and I know Mr. Evans probably does too, you know, we're thinking of individuals, you know, to Ms. Sykes' presentation, those, those individual anecdotal quotes and stories that our kids have shared with us are really behind the numbers of those data, of that data. So in August, we set out to create a cycle of listening and serving, listening and serving, listening and serving. And if I had to say really what is the core of the work that we do at Wilson, it is listening and serving. My mom always said, "We don't give other people the gift that we want. We ask others, you know, how they would like to be gifted." And so that's something that, you know, we have to listen in order to know, you know, what gift they would want for us to provide. So here's the data. So why center Black students at Wilson? When, in, in the beginning of the school year, we took a look at this data. So in two thousand twenty-two, our overall core sense of belonging was fifty-one, but our Black and African-American students were reporting a sense of belonging of only forty-four percent. So when we're looking at a gap that's that large, you know, we, we know that we have a problem and that we probably need to figure out what exactly that is. So I'm proud to say that a year later, we're looking at a one percent increase in the sense of belonging overall, but a five percent increase in the overall sense of belonging for our Black and African-American students. So a significant jump for that particular piece of data. And that's why we center our Black students, because they benefit, but so does our entire community. We never harm our community by centering Black students. I'll say it again. We never harm our community by centering Black students. So how connected, we had two particular questions we were really interested in when we first started. And one is, "How connected do you feel to adults at your school?" And what you can see is on the left, all students from one year to the next. We were below the state average of connectedness to adults. The state average was one and a third, and we were well below that. But we were really below that with our Black students. And we're really proud to say that we saw a tremendous jump with our Black students, nine percent. A more favorable response to, "How connected do you feel just adults at your school with our Black students?" And also a significant jump with all of our students at four percent. So we're very proud of that. And the second piece of data is, "How close do our kids feel to one another?" Which can really fuel their desire to, to be at school and to do well in those classes and to really engage in the activities that we provide for them. So again, all of our students were at sixty percent and grew three percent, but our Black students were at fifty-four, which was alarming, you know, six percent below our, our overall number. But we jumped with our Black students all the way up to sixty-one percent. So a really proud piece of data for us there. But as I mentioned in my opening, probably the most significant jump in our data is around this question. And this was really, honestly, it was an extraneous outcome. I mean, this was not, I did not set out, and Jonathan and I, we did not really talk about this particular question when we started our work together. But what we found is when we were listening and serving and listening and serving, we created trust with our students that, that created a bond and a context for sharing about grievances, about racism, about mistreatment, perceived and, and real, you know, with our kids, like just creating this open feedback loop with them and systems and structures for communicating those, those grievances that resulted in our students feeling that that mattered, that mattered to us and that we would, we would respond to those concerns. So that's really a, something that we're really proud of. So the best part is now. Mr. Evans?
Man, so I'm sure some of you guys might ask, "So how do we do it?" You know? And to be honest, to think about it, is, is, we really had a special team this year at Wilson. And that, that led from parents to administrators to teachers and to even the leaders that I had that were a part of my club. And I wouldn't have been able to do any of it if I didn't have the support of them. I mean, trying to balance, you know, counseling work and all these events. These are just some. And you guys have our yearbook that we have, and it has more of the events, but this is just a glimpse of the amazing work that we did this year. I kind of want to highlight one of our events that we did that I kind of feel like it was really pivotal and the work that we did, which was the Step Show. Caverly was really adamant about having a Step Show during school hours because she wanted every student at Wilson High School to be able to experience a piece of our culture. We were able to have thirteen hundred students, community members and faculty in assembly to experience historically Black, the Divine Nine Step Teams to talk about the organizations, their dedication to service and education. And so for me, in that moment, I realized that I wasn't only serving our students at Wilson High School, I realized that I was really serving our community. And so that, that event actually, it kind of showed me how important the work was, not only for me, but it was, it was much bigger than just what we were doing at Wilson High School. Another, another activity that we did that I feel like was really pivotal in our work at Wilson was our listening session. Caverly mentioned earlier, it's really about listening and serving. And so in the beginning of the year, we met and we put on the, on the master calendar because we knew that the, that the year was going to get really busy. So we said, "We need to plan out the days when we're going to meet with these students." So we had thirty, around thirty students from every pathway, Black students. And we had planned questions that we were going to ask the students to kind of get their experience at Wilson High School. Once we did that, then we had another date where we met with administrators and leaders, leadership at Wilson to where we talked about what was said in those listening sessions, and then we had a response. So in those listening sessions, we had some themes. This is the theme that kind of came up. Black and African-American students did not feel comfortable in their class. The dress code was a way to target Black and African-American students. African-American students did not feel valued on campus. The lack of Black teachers was a problem because they couldn't feel connected in class. And being the only Black student in class to them made them feel really uncomfortable. And so once we got these themes, we had a meeting with our admin team and our leadership team and our counselors to talk about how we were going to respond and how we were going to make changes at our school. So this is kind of how we responded to, to these listening sessions from what we got from the students. So for the response for when students did not feel comfortable in their classes, we developed a tighter system and a way to respond to grievances whenever students had problems. For the dress code, we, we used to have students in the front of the, front of the school dressed like, change out when they wasn't in dress code, but we changed that to a scanning system. And so then we would call them out of class later. For students not feeling valued in class, we had P Ds that the students led to talk about, to, to train teachers to talk about relationship building in class and restorative practices. For the lack of Black teachers, our, our school district has been centering, hiring more Afri, more, having a more diverse workforce. And being the only Black student in class, one of the things we did was, next year, in our, in our way that we're going to be scheduling students in all our history classes, we're going to make sure that we do not have any history classes with only one Black student, Black or African-American student. We want to make sure that we have at least two or more in every class. And so I know me and Caverly, we could talk for days and hours about the work that we did at Wilson this year. I'm really excited about the work that we did. And I know last year was definitely a special year that, man, I don't know if it can never be replicated, but I know that we're excited for next year and hopefully that we can build on like what we did this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
All right. Well, first off, thank you for everyone in regards to the poll survey and obviously the folks from Wilson High School. As I think that this is a great example of the use of qualitative data and its approach toward making sure that we have a more inclusive school district. One of the things that I got to see firsthand with my experience over at Wilson High School, in particular with the Young Black Scholars Group, was that sense of connection with the staff. And that was something that was brought up earlier. I was, obviously Jonathan and the team with Ms. Caverly and Diana, they, they were just nails in regards to building a sense of connection there. But all things considered, there was also almost like a undertone of like a buzz. You can almost feel the palpability that this program had on the campus. And so I was very much impressed with the great work that was going on with Y B S in particular. And the part that makes this a good transition in regards to our pulse surveys and them as a, let's call it an anecdotal component of it, is this is the exact example of the type of vibe we wanted all of our campuses. And unfortunately, and fortunately, the anecdotal components, the stories, the responses, though they are hard to quantify or capsulize, I'm very much appreciative of this report. And I don't know if we would have been able to get those stories, those connections, those students that were in need. If it wasn't for these pulse surveys, I almost looked to them as a, using another comparison, almost like a, that service engine light that comes on on a car. But this is a little bit different, right? You don't want the service engine light to come on on your car. Sadly, and my car probably comes on maybe a little too often. But in the same token, it gives you an opportunity to check in with the maintenance and the well-being of your car. Same thing here with these pulse surveys, is it's a great opportunity to check in and when you may or may not have a program like the Young Black Scholars Program over at Wilson. But regardless, there are students who have issues going on at home. There are students who have frustrations going on on campus and having a opportunity like a pulse survey to be able to check in while also speaking to things that are going well on a campus. I just think it's been a fantastic tool and I'm glad you all were able to present the impact of both things working together. So thank you.
Ms. Caverly, it was so awesome to be there that day for the Black Student Celebration in May at Wilson. And I remember having a brief opportunity to chat with Dr. Brown on our way out and sort of ask Dr. Brown the question, "How do we make this happen at every school in our district?" And I've been thinking about that, not just through the celebration, but in the context of our. of our equity and excellence efforts. And first off, it takes courage, right, to do this work. It takes will and volition also because you can have courage, but if it's not directed at a clear and viable goal toward that, then the courage sort of, you can spin wheels, right, with that courage and bravery. But it also takes resources and I noticed that in a couple of your action steps, it actually doesn't take resources to not schedule a black student to be alone in a history class, all right? That's just an executive decision that can be made and said, we will not schedule a black student to be alone in a history class. And a few of the others are nominal costs, right? Scanning of the IDs, not really a cost to that indirectly because of the time and effort, but not a substantial cost, I should say. So I want to, using this as an illustrative example, use and build on what Dr. Baker referenced in terms of direct mapping with our graduate portrait. To me, and I raised this at our Black Student Achievement Initiative presentation that we had, I believe at the last board meeting, that of course, it's important to document and report and manage and track on our students' well-being, sense of belonging, agency, identity. But to me, it's particularly important in relation to the correlation with the sense of belonging and agency and identity and our student outcomes. The purpose of us being here is to improve student outcomes, in this case particularly for our black students, all right? But as you said so eloquently, Principal Cavali, this isn't just for black students, right? We do right by black students, we do right by all students in our district. So here's my friendly challenge to you at Wilson, but to all of our schools and our entire team. We have heard, not just in this last year, year and a half, but on an ongoing basis from our black students specifically, but from our students of color, which is 88% of our students in our district, how important it is for them to feel seen, heard, valued, supported, celebrated, all the things that encompass the work that you're doing through your Young Black Scholars Program and through our Black Student Achievement Initiative. Publicly, we've heard it through focus groups, through testimonies, through surveys, through qualitative and quantitative data, how important it is for them to not just feel that, but for actually, for us to take action on that. So to me, the important component here is the correlation or the extent of the correlation with which our student wellness is connected to our student outcomes. And in this case, the graduate portrait. So when I see survey results or focus group quotes, I'm thinking, okay, how does this connect to, if at all, or relate to student success, right? Because we can build a climate, we can nurture a culture, but for me, the catalyst for being able to do this at each and every one of our schools is to unequivocally demonstrate that by providing this for students, supporting their sense of belonging, celebrating their successes, responding to in actionable ways, them wanting to be seen, felt, valued, heard, the goal here is to get them to be successful academically, all right? And by providing this space, this culture systematically, I'd really like to see the correlation between why it's important to do this work and increase 9% at Wilson, right? And if we can demonstrate that that then clearly and unequivocally shows that that leads to improved student outcomes, academic outcomes, talking about, whether that's on I-ready at our elementary school or A-through-G completion rates or AP passing rates or our graduation rates, to me, that's the bottom line. So my challenge to my colleagues, to our team is it's obviously important to have this data, but this data in a vacuum, you know, we can clap and celebrate and feel good about, hey, we increased 7%. And I know that's not the goal, right? It's this incremental approach. But to me, it's unequivocally demonstrating that there is a correlation between sense of belonging and agency and connectedness. And the national research shows that the more that students are engaged, the more successful they are. Well, let's prove that in Long Beach. So I've been thinking about this a lot, Dr. Brown. And once that, you know, I think that can be a catalyst, right? If we can say this led to a 25% learning acceleration for black students at Jefferson or Whittier or Franklin or whatever we're talking about, or Jordan, then we got something here. So that's my challenge to you all. Let's celebrate this, let's celebrate these illustrative examples. But to me, the bottom line is this means nothing unless we can correlate this to our student outcomes. So that's my challenge to our superintendent as well.
I'll also say, so yes, to the challenge for all of us and our research office is working on a research model that will specifically connect places where we've seen success, student success, and then backing in to what the strategies have been. So we're studying our own work. We now have a whole year of poll survey data, as you've heard, and we have the annual longitudinal core survey data to look at. So yes, more to come, but a great challenge. Dr. Brown, I wonder if you'll just take a moment to talk about the work of Californians for Justice, especially it has been referenced, but also a nice opportunity to highlight the equity-centered work and the work of students in professional learning for adults.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. We have continued over four years now and continuing into the next year to really benefit from the partnership of Californians for Justice. They have brought all of the principles of relationship-centered schools to us and specifically in the creation of what we refer to as equity design teams. Wilson has been one of the high schools that has participated alongside Jordan, Poly, Cabrillo and Lakewood. And the work that they have encouraged around calling in student voices and allowing, asking students in to be shared decision-makers, to be teachers, to be guides and to be partners with us in the experience that they are having in our schools has really led some powerful work. Wilson was the first school this year to have students lead professional development for teachers around the experience that they are having and the circumstances that contribute to their learning. And so again, opening up a very brave space on the part of Ms. Cavali and the administrative team to allow students to teach teachers in a way that does not typically happen, but really exemplifies the type of work that we want to expand and do more of. We will be continuing that work with Californians for Justice in the next year and even expanding the work to do more of that student-led professional development. And it stretches into so many aspects of what's important in our core goals to include the reimagining of school safety. One of the things we always have to ask when we think about school safety is if we were to think differently about a traditional type of law enforcement, what would we replace what has been before with? Well, we would replace it with relationship. We would replace it with connection amongst adults and students. We would replace it with an opportunity to be in community together and to hold value in that community. So thank you for the question and really just proud to highlight the work that we continue to partner with in Californians for Justice and really allowing our students to lead us into the next space that we will move into in being more relationship-focused.
Dr. Brown, if I may, this is a great example of us connecting the dots back to budget decisions. So today, our board approved a $600,000 contract, an increase with CFJ to do all those things that you talked about.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's why we did it. That's exactly why we did it. So you're right, it's beautiful when connectedness happens.
Do we have any more comments or do we have questions or anything? No?
I love this yearbook. I tried to get one before they passed them out and they kind of were holding back, but thank you for giving me one now.
Yeah.
President Craig, I'm going to suggest a short recess and come back in 10 minutes once you're finished with this item.
Well, I just wanted to thank Mr. Evans and Ms. Cavali for being here and also just hearing about all the wonderful things that, you know, that's happening at Wilson. And I'm hoping that this will serve as an example of what can be done at other schools, not just high schools or middle schools, but what can be done at other schools for our students. And I love all the comments about how this work is important, not just on its own, but how it connects to everything else that we're doing. And that when we talk about student outcomes, we want to see how this type of work influences those outcomes. And that's what we're all about is the, you know, the outcomes. But what I appreciate, what I appreciate in the presentation is the qualitative data and voices, individual voices, that makes it very personal and it's not just about numbers, it's very personal. And then you add in faces and pictures and you have these wonderful lists of things that are taking place and I'm very hopeful. And I am, I am sure that the numbers will bear out the value of what's being done. So again, thank you for sharing, thank you for letting us be involved and I hope that we get more invitations to these special events so that we can connect with those kids also and connect with the work that's being done. Okay, so with that, we will take a 10-minute recess, but I will start in 10 minutes. Thank you. Thank you. We will resume the meeting. And last we left you, we were doing a staff report on our Core and Pulse Survey update. And now we're at new business. So, item 16.1, adoption of the 2023-2024 Local Control and Accountability Plan. I think I'll ask, oh, look, we have, we have Mr. George Sigh here.
Hi, good evening. Hope everyone's feeling and doing well tonight. Tonight, our presentation provides a quick recap of our past few months together. The release of the written responses to community questions, the LCAPs, local indicators, and the recommendation for your approval of the New Year's plan. So as a reminder, the LCAP includes the components in the bottom two sections of this budget pyramid. Almost 70% of our district's total $1.3 billion budget. These comprise of the $739 million base grant that's generated by per student funding, and $134 million in supplemental and concentration grants based on the number and percentage of high-needs students that we serve. In previous presentations, we covered the LCAP's five goals of basic services, schools as supportive places, academic progress, college and career readiness, and active engagement in learning. The LCAP, the LCAP drafts have been detailing the 31 measures, 29 actions, and since the June 2 draft, how the $873 million LCAP budget will support these goals. The Action Summary serves as a community resource and provides a more condensed version of the LCAP. So while this document has not been modified since our last meeting, we are looking into subsequent ways to reorganize this information so that listed actions can center around community priorities. Both the LCAP and Action Summary lists projected budget, projected budgets and actions, which by the way, are not ranked by priority. Both of these can be found at, you guessed it, lbschools.net/LCAP. Mr. Suarez will now provide you LCAP updates since our last June 2 presentation.
Thank you, George. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to finish the final LCAP presentation of '22-23. As part of the LCAP process, the superintendent must respond to questions about the draft. On May 3, La Maitre Unified School District deployed a thought exchange that had two parts. The first part was a rating section for our analysis about community priorities. The second section was a very simple question. It asked, "What questions do you have about the draft LCAP?" The thought exchange was shared at the May meetings of DCCAC and DILAC. It was also shared to all LBUSD families through School Messenger. In addition, posters were sent to every school featuring a QR code that went directly to the thought exchange. This thought exchange closed on June 15. As a result, we received over 100 questions or comments, most of them asking for clarification. Answers were written in themes as shown on this slide. The letter was posted to the LCAP webpage on June 16. It was also sent directly to the membership of DCCAC and DILAC. So we had some inquiries about local indicators, so let me share some information about the creation of LCAP metrics. We shared during a previous board meeting that the LCAP meets two goals. One is to allow local districts to set their own goals. And the other is to make sure that these goals are connected to the broad state goals known as the state priorities. Some of the state priorities are measured at the state level, and others need to be captured locally. The next slide illustrates the data collected in support of the LCAP metrics. This chart shows which measures in the LBUSD LCAP are collected by the state and those that are collected locally. For example, State Priority 1, which is basic learning conditions, is listed on the first row of this slide. Data for State Priority 1 is locally collected. One of the required measures of State Priority 1 is credentialing of LBUSD's teaching staff. So in the LCAP, we wrote a measure, and this is identified as M1.1. To summarize this chart, data for state priorities 4, 5, and 8 are collected by the state. Data for state priorities 1, 2, 3, 6, and 7 are collected here at the local level. The LCAP has more measures than the ones that are listed on this slide. We feel that adding measures beyond those that are required provides more data that is needed to present a bigger picture of the LCAP and district success. Don't underestimate the power of www.lbschools.net/LCAP. All things related to the LCAP are posted there. This webpage includes all the drafts of the LCAP, the LCAP tables, the Action Summary, which is a simple version of programs and services in the LCAP. In addition, all of the presentations are posted, including presentations to this board and all presentations to DCCAC and DILAC from this year and two years prior. Finally, the response to questions that was shared as a part of tonight's slide deck is also found at, yes, you guys guessed it, lbschools.net/LCAP. We hope that this can be a resource for our community, as well as a place to ensure transparency. All right, I'll just continue without this. Ah, there we go. "Thank you." I mean, that's, this was 10 slides. "Thank you, members of the board and senior staff, for your leadership and support of this process. Thanks to our community, parent groups, advocacy groups, parents, for offering perspectives which provided us the opportunity to explore programs and services. Thanks to our staff for looking at effective supports for students. Thanks to our students who let us in on their experiences that gave us opportunities to discuss needs and to uplift their voice." Finally, thank you to Lucy, Carmen, George, Viva, and Renee for being a collaborative team of diverse expertise with looking at new approaches to the difficulty of budgeting, beginning with students and bringing in all perspectives in our conversations. So with that, unlike last year, tonight, we don't have any fancy lights, we don't have any neon signs, unless George is somewhere sneaking up. Nope, he's not, doesn't have any. What we do have is a recommendation. Our recommendation is for the adoption of the 2023-24 LCAP. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, do we have questions or comments?
Do we want to make a motion and then?
And then open discussion? We do.
So move to approve recommendation for adoption of this year's LCAP.
Second.
Okay, now we will open the floor for a discussion. Dr. Benitez.
Thank you for not just tonight, but through the whole process, to the entire team that you mentioned right now, Mr. Suarez. So over the last couple of months, and a couple is relative to me, it could have been five months, it could have been four, but through, through our LCAP and budget engagement process, we've heard different public comment, we've received mail, calls, prioritizing things like, we heard tonight, our multilingual learners and supports for them, tutoring, counseling, right, and, and those efforts. I want to choose one illustrative example because it's one that I've seen tremendous opportunity and growth and improvement in, and it's our community engagement aspect of the work, whether that's parent engagement, student engagement, family engagement, or the broader community engagement. So a question for the team here, since all of you played extensive roles in expanding and strengthening our community engagement efforts through multiple processes these last couple of years, is actually a twofold question. One is, what did we learn from our process that we either did differently, pivoted on, and/or thought about differently? And if it's not for this particular year, things that we can consider to either change, improve on, or see as an opportunity for the upcoming year? And I'm going to just speak illustratively to the parent engagement, family engagement, student engagement component, because I do want to emphasize that this is not a static document, that this is not a static process, right? And so there, there will continue to be opportunities to engage. I mean, we heard, you know, public comment around student, sorry, school site councils, about DILAC, about opportunities with our Black Student Achievement Initiative, Sankofa, right, opportunities to expand and strengthen our engagement. So question to the team is, what did we learn from our previous processes or engagement efforts that we pivoted on, changed, improved on this year, and/or that are considering for next year to, you know, for our continuous improvement?
Good evening. I think one of the key things that I would say that we learned is, you know, obviously, the one that's really obvious is that we did really center our students and our student voices, going to the classroom, hearing directly from them. The other component, I would say, from parents that we heard constantly is, how do we create more materials that's accessible for them to be able to receive the information? As you know, just the materials that we have to do by, mostly by compliance, tend to be very cumbersome, or very wordy, or have very much like edu- education words. I don't know what, what a better way to say it, but the terminologies can be very complicated. It kind of allows us to be almost distant from our community in that way, and that just creates this barrier. And so making meaning together, I think that even a previous comment that we received from a previous board meeting from one of, one of you about how can you create that action summary to look like where it's centered around the community priorities rather than centered around budget priorities or the LCAP measures? And so that is a project that we're going to work on this summer to create that document, and just work together hand in hand with our parent groups to see if it makes sense. And then I think we can take stronger action from there. I think that's one of the key things that we learned, is that it's just not accessible yet. We don't want to simplify things because that kind of like makes it feel like we're doing less meaning. I think it's just meaning that how do we make it more accessible?
I'll add too, Dr. Salazar's not here tonight, but I know that much of the feedback this year has led to her researching some specific parent engagement frameworks from a research perspective and really thinking about how to engage parents differently. So there's an effort, parent, what's the name of the, it's not coming to me.
Your parent?
No, the, the parent partners?
Yeah, well.
Parent partners? Okay, well, it's that simple, thank you, so it came to me. But to actually not just create new activities, but actually to build a model of parent engagement that will test out at multiple schools. So Dr. Salazar's been actually with Consuela Kickbush, looking at her institute, she's been with a group of parents actually at a community schools engagement, like really researching what to bring back to test out, but not just test out as a series of activities, test out as, with a framework in mind. I'll also say on her behalf, there are many lessons learned from the Sankofa Parent Village. And so I know that, that can't speak directly for her, but attaching that kind of engagement and the success of that work with parents, think about their voice and what they have brought forward to say, "This is what works for us." Not that you can apply all of the same things, because when you think about different cultural groups and different, but gathering lessons learned from a successful group like that, and then looking at a framework as a way to then teach schools and help schools really uplift their local community with a new framework in mind, and not just going back to what had been maybe the, the traditional ideas of the past, but really advancing on, on new ideas.
It's parenting partners, just to clarify. Parenting partners.
Well, first off, I'll be brief, but I just wanted to speak a little bit to the Action Summary tool. One of the things that you've already brought up, which I thought was important to me when I first came on board, is that we often were speaking a language from an internal standpoint that was hard for folks from the community and externally to really understand and comprehend. And I often would ask the question, can we make it plain? Can we make it plain so everyone can understand and have the direct correlation between the work that's being done to what's happening at the school sites? And I'm just very appreciative of looking at this tool, because it is often what we talk about here in regards to approving, well, eventually approving a budget, but really seeing the connection to the dollars that we often discuss to what's happening directly in alignment with our initiatives, happening directly at the campuses. And so having this tool here that directly correlates that, I think, is a very clear diagram, to a certain extent, of what's going on in our district. And so I just wanted to applaud you all for, I don't want to use the term simplicity, but you know what I mean, the ability to tell a story within the LCAP, as I think that this is an important tool for our community as an entity as large as our district. that this is an important tool for our community as an entity as large as our district is, we need to be able to explain very clearly with what's going on. And I think that these tools in particular do that. So, bravo.
Thank you.
I do have a question on goal, action item 312, 3.12, where there's the community priority of 996,568 for 29 high, higher need schools. And so breaking it down, it's approximately 40, 34,365. And I'm just wondering if there will be additional funding for those tutoring supports? And we've been hearing the community, and I do understand that there's supports kids have through TOSSAs, literacy coaches and whatnot, but this is, I guess that's really my question, is will there be additional funding in this area?
So the good news is that we've been using multiple resources to fund tutoring. So that is just one area that was very distinctive to the LCAP, kind of as we got going with the LCAP in general. But our ESR dollars right now are the bulk of how we fund our tutoring, and it includes several contracts, I think there's five or six contracts, and then all of our school sites are allocated, many more than $40,000 per school site to accomplish that. They can also use their own site funds for tutoring. So a lot of schools will input into their CIE plan tutoring to use LCFF dollars and Title I dollars as an additional support. So right now, that's one of the ways in the LCAP that we're supporting, but really it's the big undertaking that we've utilized our ESR dollars for.
And I understand Mr. Otto has a question?
Yeah, or, or, or at least a comment, and that is, you know, and there's a historical dimension to this. When we were putting together the Long Beach College Promise a long, long time ago, the biggest problem that we had was that Cal State Long Beach really didn't want to share their data, or if they wanted to, they didn't know how to, because they didn't have the capabilities of doing all that. And you had to overcome that, and it took a long time, but it overcame, that was overcome, and, and things moved forward dramatically. I think about that when I think about iReady, because, you know, in the relatively recent past, we were saying, okay, we're doing this in April, we're going to get the results in September, and then all of a sudden, iReady came along and it was almost instantaneously that we could look at data and make comparisons and whatnot. I think about that in the context of this funding formula with a caveat. And the caveat is that in the good old days, when they brought this into being, when Michael Kirst and Jerry Brown, Governor Brown, kind of brought this into being, they had some principles behind it. And, and I, and I, I see that under the governor's administration, we, I feel like we've kind of slipped away from that a little bit, and that what's going on is that the categorical programs that this was designed to not eliminate, but, but to put on a second tier, all of a sudden, we're, the categorical schools seem to be sleep, sneaking back in a little bit, and I was going, wait a minute, what is this? But having gone through this process, which, and my hat's off to James Suarez in this, because I didn't think I would ever understand this, and by the way, I think if I asked him directly, he would say, I don't think you still do, Mr. Otto, but, but what we're doing is trying to listen intently to the, the users of this system and, and address their needs and, and their desires. And I am, my hat's off to the Long Beach Unified School District for the work that they've done, the outreach that they've done, the, how they've been able to create a way of doing things. It's, I think of it as a way of creating trust. I don't think that there's universal trust here, but I think it's moving in that direction. And, and that my hat, and I think a lot of people's hat, hats are off to the Long Beach Unified School District for making an effort to listen, to translate the, what they hear into what people want, to respond in ways that, that both, you know, that we're not just rolling over, we're saying, well, what about this? Or if we do that, where's the money going to come from? You got to take it from someplace else. But I am very appreciative of all the work. I think where we have arrived at is a very, very good place, but not just because of the numbers, but also because I think that in the end, people are saying, this was a good process. This was a way where largely we were heard, we didn't get everything that we wanted, but still, I think that it's, it's been an exercise, it's been worth going through, and it's just getting better. And so I just wanted to compliment everybody for all that's gone on during the course of the putting together of this local control funding formula and therefore the budget. So that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Dr. Benitez.
Yeah, Ms. Arques, you always spark additional questions here. Well, I think it's your, just your ability to provide an understanding of a very complicated, complex budget, right, and, and just be so nimble that we can ask you things on the fly. But, but, but really, it shouldn't depend on you just on a whim, you know, having to figure out questions that we're asking here. So I'm going to take this opportunity to encourage our team. Mr. Moskowitz, you're the one that's here, otherwise I would direct it at Dr. Camarino and Dr. Lund. Oh, there he is, there he is. Come out here, Dr. Camarino, come out here. So I still think, again, coming from the spirit of improving, we can do a better job because this budget, you know, $1.3 billion, all of these, you know, action items and line items and wording and tutoring comes from master and from this. I do think we can do a better job, and it comes from a question that I asked Ms. Takahashi earlier when we were briefed in committee around things like this 2.07 million dollar contract that we approved tonight for our YMCA to do ELO, right? And, and all of this is connected to community priority, resources, and then it shows up in our early learning opportunity. So I want to encourage, you know, Dr. Camarino, Dr. Lund, Mr. Moskowitz, any opportunity you have, it's important to raise what we're doing around tutoring, what we're doing around SEL, what we're, and again, it's not supposed to be comprehensive, but we, we approved tonight $2.7 million. That's just one contract for the YMCA to do after school and enrichment and all the things that were prioritized last year, right? And you've been talking about ELO, but again, I want to encourage our team, we got to lift these things up, right? Otherwise, it seems like, where is this $1.3 billion going every month, right? And then we come around May, June, when we approve, and then folks are like, oh, they already decided all of this, or my specific priority isn't in there. Well, it may not be, but these larger priorities that we have on an ongoing basis are nuanced, right? And the funding is super important to understand and have transparency around, but these consent calendars contain millions of dollars, whether it's transportation for our students with disabilities, tutoring, enrichment programs, someone's got to pay for Camp Oaks. That was presented to us as a recommendation, all right? ELO, I mean, I can go on and on, right? Diversifying, we heard the diversification of our textbooks and libraries today. So OCIPD comes to us, and then it shows up, but it would be really hard for someone to dig through. I mean, I was sort of shooting that, you know, in the dark and asked Ms. Takahashi, is that 2.7 million? She's like, yeah, that's Brian's ELO. You know, voila. So just, just encouraging our, particularly Jay and Brian that you're here, and I'll, you know, I'll pick on Chris at another meeting, like, we got to hear about this stuff, right? We got to hear about what the community prioritized, where it's reflected in the budget, and then how it shows up at our schools. But it's way better than we were just a few years ago with connecting those dots.
I'll point out another aspect of that, Dr. Benitez, just because you're making those connections. So we've heard a lot over the last couple of years about our wellness centers. So we started our wellness centers with ESR funds, and now you see them, line 5.3, the sustaining, because of community input, the sustaining of both middle and high school in the LCAP, funds that don't go away. So we searched for things that were deprioritized as the community, both staff, students, and adults who have come to, to speak on public testimony have shared that as a priority. So elevated that as a long-term priority, maintained in the LCAP, not just ESR, and as a long-term strategy. So just making another connection to what, what we've heard, not always in the moment, but over time.
Well, I want to thank the staff for that presentation, and also Dr. Benitez for making those connections and for uplifting those numbers and those items from our consent calendar and tying them to what we're doing as far as approving the LCAP and the budget. So it's been a while, but I forget, did we have a motion in a second?
Yes, we did.
That was the discussion?
Time to call a question.
Okay, I will, and I will ask our board secretary to take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Benitez?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
And just for clarification, we're voting on the LCAP, correct?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
And student member Lopez, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have item 16.2, adoption of the district's budget for 2023-2024.
Move for approval?
Second.
Discussion?
I do have a few questions. I think the first one is, how much is in the reserves in all of the funds?
All of the funds?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd have, I'd have to look to get to all of the funds.
Roughly?
We have, I think, around 400 million just in general fund alone, and then we have several bond funds. We just passed those bonds and we just passed Measure Q, and then we pulled down several bond funds. So I think we've got about 400 or 500 million in the bond funds. And then there's several smaller funds that contain 10 to 12 million, depending on the type of fund.
So close to altogether, roughly?
Roughly a million dollar, a, a.
A billion?
A billion dollars, yes.
And I, I do notice that we're budgeting, there's 6.2 million for SEL facilitator, the, the last year of ESR funds. And so we're proposing to start a program when those funds are going to be gone. And so is that going to move into the regular budget later? So if we're starting a new program, I'm concerned with the consistency of programs.
Yeah, that's a great question. So for this next year, we've adopted a new SEL curriculum at the elementary level. And so part of the role, a primary part of the role of this new position is to help our classroom teachers to implement this new curriculum. So we see the greatest need in this first year because there is a new curriculum with a teacher being able to go in and help model and plan with classroom teachers to implement the new curriculum. Beyond that first year, obviously, we'll see what the impact is. Hopefully, there's a very positive impact. But even if it is only one-year program, the position is really intended primarily to support the implementation of the curriculum that will only be new in this first year.
So we're looking at a one-year, for the most part, program?
I think, I mean, we'll have to look at all of our positions that are outside of the classroom once we are past our ESR dollars, so it'll be part of a larger approach. No decisions have been made yet, how long the position would be in place, but if it is only one year, I think there's still value in implementing that, the new curriculum.
And then there is a, on the indirect cost rate worksheet, number seven, page two, we have board and superintendent budgeting $6,522,838. Can you just tell me what that really entails? And does this entail like a car allowance? And if so, how much are we spending for, you know, executives or superintendent and car allowances, if that's what is included? Or do we even have that in the budget?
Okay, so that section, that $6 million, is formatted a little differently from the budget. A lot of times you hear us talk about objects, so we'll say certificated salaries, classified salaries. That's by function. So what that function entails is board and superintendent costs to run a district our size, about $6 million. This includes all of the board costs, the superintendent costs, the deputy soup's office, the level offices. It also includes our ERO and our communications budget. And it's all-inclusive of everything that happens in those particular offices. So there are some staff, there are some staff members that receive car allowances, and if they are in that section, they are included in those totals.
Do we have any idea roughly how much we're spending on car allowances?
So we spend about $1.7 million in general fund in, in travel and mileage, because anybody that travels within the district, anybody that does. And then car allowances, about $4,000 a month for, for the staff members that receive those.
And then how much are we anticipating spending on lawsuits next year, and where would we find that in the budget?
So there's different line items for lawsuits. I'd have to look at the particular pieces. They're in the contracts, usually in the bottom portion where we contract with legal, and so I could look into that and could bring that back.
That's a, that's a very hard number to predict because it's completely dependent on our legal costs for any, for any year. So we could provide a multi-year, over the last several years, how much our legal expenses have been. But in terms of predicting, it's a very hard number, and it is something that relies on our reserves in any given year. Thank you.
I wanted to add also, Board Member Lopez, that when our teachers and other staff go to conferences, and they're local, they also get reimbursed for mileage. So it's not just members of the district, but members of our school sites too.
Just a point of clarification, Dr. Baker, but there's, I'm interpreting legal costs different from lawsuits. Aren't we insured for lawsuits above a certain amount of money that gets? So here we're talking both legal costs and up to whatever amount, you know, below whatever the threshold is for lawsuits, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. I want to take, I want to, yeah, take a moment to thank our, our financial team for the work they do throughout the year, because the LCAP process, the budget process, it's a year-round process. You've given your time and your efforts to meet with us on an individual basis so that we have an opportunity to ask questions, to go over things. You make things easily digestible. For example, with the budget, you provide the summary that accompanies the budget, so it's not taking place of the budget, but it's in addition to the budget, lets us know the highlights, numbers we should be aware of, trends we should be aware of, that sort of thing. So I thank you for that. That's very valuable. And I think we're ready for the vote. So did you have something to add, or are you ready to vote?
Yeah, at some point, Renee, you should give us a cost of living adjustment training.
Oh, my goodness. That's a whole separate, you're right, that's a whole separate training. So at this time, I'm going to ask our board secretary to take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Benitez?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Member Otto?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you. And student member Lopez, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes 5-0.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we have item 16.3, approval of the MOU with the California School Employees Association's effects of layoff Unit B. The first, the one we just voted on was Unit A, this one will be Unit B.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. Are we anticipating layoffs?
Because this is, this is for the period of February 22nd, 2023 to June 30th of 2024.
So this is, the effects of layoff MOU is a longstanding MOU that we've had with CSEA. We review that and then presented back to the board to keep it in place. We don't have this in place because we're anticipating layoffs. This is more of the guide or the steps that we follow if there was a layoff or if there was a reduction in hours. So this is just outlining between us and CSEA what steps we'll take in regards to communication.
Okay, so just to clarify, we are not anticipating layoffs?
We are not anticipating layoffs. This is a standard MOU that we've had in place and we're re-presenting it so that it can be updated.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, we will ask the board secretary to take a roll call vote.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
Thank you. And student member Lopez, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have item 16.4, approval of the MOU with the California Schools Employees Association's effects of layoff Unit B. The first, the one we just voted on was Unit A, this one will be Unit B.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask our board secretary to take a roll call vote.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
Thank you. Student member Lopez, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes 5-0.
That's your last vote as a school board member?
Now we are at report of board members. We'll start over here with Ms. Lopez.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to congratulate all of the seniors who graduated this month, including my daughter, my youngest daughter, who is headed to USC next year. Go Bruins!
What happened over there, Ms. Lopez?
All right, go Bruins! Your hard work, students, has finally paid off and good luck to you all in your future endeavors, whether you're attending a four-year university, to your college, trade school, joining the workforce, the military, or just simply taking a break. I hope LBUSD has equipped you with the tools needed to succeed. Thank you to all the parents, the educators, support staff who made their graduation possible. While I attended many LBUSD graduations over the years, this was my first time seeing the hard work that takes place behind the scenes, and this is truly remarkable. So thank you to everyone who makes these graduations possible. Also like to thank the parents, the students, the educators, and the community members who took time this school year to attend board meetings, to provide public comment, and to send us emails. Thank you. Your voice and input is important to the success and future of our district, and it is important that we continue to hear from you. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I too want to focus my comments on our graduates, our 5,400 graduates, right? That graduated anywhere from January to now, basically. And so to me, as, as I've shared with some of the team here that we were at graduations together at a couple of weeks ago, it's, it's best time of the year, favorite time of the year. And of course, we start by honoring the commitment, the determination, the grit, the resilience of our students. But also, all of the individuals that had a role in our student success. Ms. Lopez, you mentioned some of those. So, you know, I think, I think it's, if not more important, a different kind of important for every individual that had a role in the success of students, whether that be a tia, an uncle, an aunt, a friend, a primo, whoever that village is for our students. And as you pointed out, Ms. Lopez, it's also a testament to the fine educators that we have here in the district, from our facilities folks, to our instructional aides, to our behavioral therapists, counselors, librarians, nurses, just the whole team that all had a pivotal role in the success of students beyond the graduation, because we also had students promoting right throughout our district. So just hats off to the entire LBUSD team. Congratulations to all the graduates. I know all of us, if we could clone ourselves, would love to be at all the graduations. And even then, right, even having them staggered, it's rough running from one to the other. So Ms. Lopez, I will reiterate all the magic that has to happen behind the scenes for us to pull it off, even in some cases of students promoting and then going back to school the next day, because we got to stagger graduations. So each and every one of you, 5,400, we got one sitting with us right here. Congratulations and all the best to everything that's next in your wonderful lives.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
So I too am going to piggyback on the graduation celebrations. For me, I think that this, that's the coolest part of this role. Obviously, we make a lot of big decisions, tough decisions, with that end goal in mind. And so to be there and to celebrate with those families, those friends, I know I personally probably overdo it, right? Because I try to make as many as I can. And this year in particular, following it, my body kind of gave out on me a little bit. But all things considered, it was important for me to be present at those graduations, especially for this class. As I said in a number of my speeches, this is one of, I would call this class the most resilient graduating class in the district's history. And I truly mean that, as they had three stages of the pandemic, and they still had some of the most impressive graduation numbers, still had some of the greatest stories of overcoming all of the difficult things that transpired over the past four years. And so I just couldn't have been more proud of this class in particular. And so it was important for me to try and make as many graduations as possible. I also got to attend my first TK transition to kender. That was also a big deal for me in particular, because I, I knew one of the transitioners, let's just say that.
They're all grown up now.
Right, 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 right. Well, now she's, they called it a butterfly transition. And as I was able to participate in that program as well, that also was quite powerful, because this was one of the classes that got to experience full-day kender. And getting to speak with those families, once again, that was one of the decisions that we made a year ago, but getting to speak with those families and them speaking to the impact of having a full-day kender, it was quite impressive. And they were quite humbled. And it's just really cool, and we get to see these decisions that we make here and get to watch them come to fruition with things like a butterfly transition. So like I said, I wanted to also just send a big kudos out to all of those that put in the, the hard work, the tough work, and working with our, our students every day, helping them not only progress academically, but mature. And so I'm just very, very appreciative of everyone's efforts in those, with that. Also, I had the awesome opportunity, right before I got sadly ill, I got to attend one Juneteenth activity a few weeks ago over at MLK Park. The undertones of this Juneteenth activity was actually centered around historical Black families in the city of Long Beach. And one of the matriarchs of the multiple Black families that are centered here is Mary Del Butler. And so it was powerful to not only hear the story and the impact that she's had on, I'll call it thousands of families and students here, because of the impact that she laid or the foundation that she laid in regards to the Black student experience, and especially in Central and West Long Beach. But it was also quite humbling to hear the work and the foundation that she set for people in my position for this role. She was the very first African-American to run for a local, for a school board position. And so, all things considered, it was one of those hidden gems in regards to the presentation over at MLK Park, in regards to the details and the information and the family stories that are shared, and the connections of those families. And so it was, once again, just one of those cool celebratory moments. I unfortunately became very sick during the, while I was at the presentation, so I had to leave a little early and then I slept for literally 24 hours. But all things considered, it was still one of those moments that I'm very, very appreciative of. And wanted to thank all parties involved who put that event together, as I think that telling those stories is just one more tool to help people feel both connected and appreciated in our city. So, but I wanted to just send that big shout-out. That's all my report.
Thank you. Is Mr. Otto ready? You're muted. Mr. Otto? You're muted. There you go.
Thank you. So I, I'll make it unanimous with regard to graduations and the end of the year. You know, all year, we have our heads down, making decisions, thinking about how we're gonna do the right thing for the school district. And then at this time of year, all of a sudden, you slow down a little bit and you see all the things that have been accomplished, all the hard work that people have done. I especially appreciated the social, emotional learning and cultural climate pulse surveys. I think I understood those better tonight and over the last week than I have ever since I've been on the school board. Once again, I'll shout out for James Suarez and all his work on the LCAP. And, and I learned a lot through all of that. And it's, it's a great end of the year. I think we accomplished a lot in what was a time like no other. And we are able to pull this off because of the quality of this district, of the trust that our parents and our, our students give to us. And so it's very humbling to, to be here post-graduation. The graduations were terrific. I was able to attend a couple of them. One of them almost cost me my marriage, because my wife said, "Did you really shake 800 hands at the Wilson High School graduation?" And I said, "Yeah, what's wrong with that?" And then I remembered that that probably wasn't a good idea. But I seem to be doing okay. And, and it's a great time to now be able to put our feet up a little bit and regard one another, have conversations about where we're going from here, how to improve on this process. And, and so I'm, I'm glad to be a part of this. Thanks, that's all.
Mr. Otto, you're a comedy genius on Zoom, it's just something else, so keep it going. You're getting funnier and funnier there, Mr. Otto.
Okay, well, I'm going to mix it up. Everybody's talking about graduations, but I'm going to mix it up a little, because at the end of the year, I attended a couple of very fun events. There was an end-of-the-year party at Bircham, and it was planned and executed by the Bircham PTA. And they made it, they made it a free event for the families, and so that was very cool. They had a band called Flash Pants, and you, you kind of have to picture Richard Simmons, and perhaps I'm dating myself, but Richard, the Richard Simmons type of an outfit. And anyhow, very entertaining. They had, so they had the live music, they had face painting, they had activities for the kids and food trucks. It was a really great way to reward the families for all the hard work throughout the year and also for support, for, for supporting PTA and making it possible for them to enjoy that program without any cost. And then also, I attended the Jeopardy tournament at Bancroft, and it was a tournament of champions for our middle school. So we had contestants from Tincher, Rogers, Hughes, Coverley, Marshall, and Bancroft. It was created and hosted by a man named Jim Burge, also hosted by Rex Richardson. And I believe they mentioned that he's the first mayor to host one of our middle school Jeopardy tournaments. And it was a lot of fun. They, they create a lot of, of the questions slash answers having to do with Long Beach. So it's very personalized. The winner was Emmett from Rogers, so congratulations, Emmett. And I also attended the end-of-the-year album event, which I want to mention, because album honors not just retirees, but people who have put in decades of service. And so I think, I think the first level was, was it five years or 10 years? Five? So we recognize people who have served five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, 25 years, keep going, and you get a pin for all those milestones. To me, when those numbers started getting higher, you know, 20, 25, 30, I was amazed at the people, because honestly, a lot of those people didn't look old enough to be, no kidding, I mean, really didn't look old enough. I think working with kids makes you young, keeps you young. That's my story, I'm sticking to it. And also, it feels like the spring semester went by very quickly. Everything just rushed past and we're already at the end of June. And so I didn't want the month to go by without mentioning Pride Month. And we, you know, for us, budget, LCAP, these are huge things. And our, some of our previous meetings went to all hours, I'm just going to say. So I do want to take a moment to acknowledge Pride Month and also to say that we are always, we are always learning, we're always doing better. And so I'm happy to report that we have a couple of things that we didn't have before. So a newly developed LGBTQIA+ Student Resources webpage, transgender and gender nonconforming student guide. So you can check that out on the website. And, and these things were done in collaboration with our students. So when we're talking about why we do what we do, it's all about helping students, no matter if they're students of color or, you know, members of the LGBTQ community, we want everybody to feel valued. That's why we're always working to improve. And then lastly, I would just like to say thank you to all of our teachers. It's another school year. It's been a rough ride, as these last three years have been. Our teachers work so hard and they deserve a little recognition. I know it's late, because the, you know, schools are closed for summer, but if you run into a teacher, thank them. But if you run into a teacher, thank them. That would just be my encouragement. So superintendent's report?
Thank you. So I'd like to ask Dr. Camerino. He's going to just share his own reflections on graduations. And then I will, I will end with my report.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Graduation is a beautiful and impactful and culminating celebration that our district hosts every year. Our high school graduations not only serve as a recognition of our students' journeys, but honors the commitment, dedication, and hard work of our classified and certificated staffs at our elementary, K-8, middle and high schools, as well as our support staffs from OCIPD, research, HRS, OSS, and the business office. And of course, as Member Lopez mentioned, our families and loved ones in our village that help our students along. We held sixteen graduation ceremonies starting on June eighth with CAMHS and Sato. The next day, we held a celebration on June ninth for ACT, Adult Community Transition Program students. And finally, on the last three days of school, we held, we had intimate thirty-four-member or graduate ceremonies from Avalon on Catalina Island to the rest of our thematic and comprehensive high schools. During the ceremony, every school highlighted the number of our students that have been accepted to colleges and universities, HBCUs, taking advantage of the college promise, other junior colleges, and students that will venture into careers and those going off to serve in the military. Scholarship amounts, specific school celebrations, and all those amazing student speakers. They were phenomenal. Our sites appreciate the attendance of our board members and especially as you approach the podium and officially accept a graduating class, which is a tradition of moving their tassels from left to right. So thank you to our board members and congratulations to our graduates of the class of 2023. Did I get it the wrong way? Sorry. Sorry. Even though I've seen it a million times, right to left, correct. Thank you. Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Dr. Camerino. Before I finish, I'd like to turn to student board member Lopez to see if you have any final remarks as a student board member.
I do want to also congratulate all the graduates this year. But I also want to mention the students that couldn't graduate with us. I actually was part of that group. I almost wasn't going to graduate. And I got the honor to be able to speak at the commencement ceremony and graduation. And I mentioned congratulations to all the graduates and also the students who couldn't graduate with us because they're just as much of a student as everyone else. They're just graduating a little bit later. They're still class of 2023, at least the summer graduates. And it touched my heart how I know two of my friends who were in the crowd, they were watching me, supporting me. And after everything ended, they texted me telling me that how much it meant for me to mention them because no one else had. And they never heard of someone mentioning the non-graduates at a graduation ceremony. It really touched my heart. On my process to graduating, I kind of was really hopeless. I, I'm not sure like where my will went. I was kind of like stuck. I don't know how I was going to make it. But I had the continuous support from all the adults that I'm surrounded by and everyone, including Dr. Baker. Special mention to Dr. Baker and Ms. Irving and Ms. Gonzalez to have continued to support me and giving me some courage to keep going, which is what I was really lacking. Ten, a ten-page final, 4:00 AM is where I finished. And I graduated. Thank you for everything. It means a lot.
And you did it. And the empathy that you have consistently demonstrated for other students is rare in someone your age. To not only think about what you need, but to think about honoring in a graduation ceremony, those who haven't graduated yet and that may need to take summer school or recover some of their credits, to be thinking of them is a rare quality in you. And it's going to be a quality that serves you well in your life. And we're really proud of you for that. So the tears are okay. Here comes Mr. Moskowitz with some Kleenex. All right, Frunia, thank you for sharing that. So two things that I want to just look back on and then a few things that I want our community to know exist out in our schools and our resources for them during summer. So thank you, President Craighead, for acknowledging Pride Month. At the last meeting, it was on my list and I didn't get to do it because it got really late. So I'm glad that you elevated that. And specifically, I want to thank Chris Itzen and the marketing and media team and the communications office for really developing new ways of centering student voice, voices through podcasts and other elements of really bringing students into the conversation about Pride Month and us being able to experience what it means to students specifically. So lots of ways that our marketing and media office just supported and highlighted Pride Month was very, very different and appreciated this year. And then also just want to thank Carl Kemp and the team that planned a wonderful City of Long Beach Juneteenth ceremony. I know there were several of us that got a chance to be down at Rainbow Lagoon and experience the beauty and the joy of what Juneteenth is in our city. It was my first time attending our city's Juneteenth ceremony and I didn't know that I needed to bring a chair. So I did a lot of standing, but next year, I'll have my chair with me because it is a lawn concert. It is a beautiful opportunity to eat food that is connected to culture and not have to stand next year. I also just really enjoyed, so we were part of the event sponsorship. I took an opportunity to interact with young people and artists and others who are potential people to work in our schools. And so I came away with some books and business cards and just a very special experience that was joyful and so glad to be a part of. Want to thank our Black Student Achievement Initiative, including Alyssa Taylor and team from YBS that included parents and students and all who were hosting our booth. And then just a special acknowledgement of Kayden, who is a young Black scholar that just graduated from Wilson High School, who had a surprise check of $5,000 for her matriculation to Cal State Long Beach. So a really special moment to see one of our students get a, get a really big check that will support her continued college. All right, on to summer. A few things that I want our community to know. First of all, thank you to Level Offices, Office of School Support Services, Deputy Superintendent, HRS, Business Offices, everybody to get thousands of students into summer school programming across the city. We'll have a better count later this week, but hundreds of teachers and thousands of students that are in everything from enrichment programming to credit recovery all across our city. So I want to just acknowledge that. That includes a hundred students who are working as their, the teacher pipeline program that interviewed, our high school students that interviewed to be classroom assistants in all different classrooms. And maybe they'll be the next teacher contract like the student from Polly High School got her teacher contract. So fabulous to see our younger students exploring education and getting paid along with taking classes at Long Beach City College that allows them to earn experience in education. Okay, so want our community to know the family resource centers are open in summer. There are North and West Region hubs at Stevens. The North and West Region hub is at Stevens Middle School. And then there's a downtown Central and East Region at Chavez Elementary School. They're open Monday through Friday from eight to one. The information is posted on our website. There's a really nice flyer. Not only can families benefit from the resources in the centers, there's also telecounseling that is available. So just want to really promote that that is available for our families. Something that we are trying this year to ensure that families have continual access to enrolling students for next year. So this year, we have enrollment centers that are open between June and actually August 11th before schools reopen. Our district office is open for registration. And then Barton, Roosevelt, and Twain are also open from eight to 12, June 26th through July 21st. Families can come in, they can register for next year, and all of their information will be transferred to the school that they will attend next year. But we're trying something new and really hoping that it eases some of the, when the school doors open, what happens for the registration processes. And lastly, another support. We've heard so much about our wellness centers. We have five high schools that are open. Their wellness centers are open at Wilson, Polly, Caprio, Millikan, and Jordan. And the only reason Lakewood's isn't open is we're not hosting summer session at Lakewood because they have major construction going on. So students can access those wellness centers at the comprehensive high schools. All right, team, anything else to add about opportunities for families in summer that I missed? Thing you want to highlight? All right, well, that's a wrap.
Well, it looks like you covered it. So that's great. I'm just going to add to the graduation thing. Shout out to Long Beach School for Adults because I think they were one of the first graduations also on that June 8th. If, and that was, that was a great fun. Very proud of all those students as well. But this brings our meeting to a conclusion. The next regular meeting is July 26th. So a bit of a break, but July 26th. And with that, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.